Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I was gonna say that was about the worst I've ever heard, too.
Sorry, somebody's phone started ringing.
We were in a different part for it.
Good evening. I will call the June 11th Select Board Meeting to Order at 5:30. We have a couple of changes. There's another announcement that we will make in a moment. The public comments from last week, the answers are still being prepared, so those will be on the website tomorrow. We have postponed the Board of Health discussion to June 25th, and we moved up the African Meeting House Procurement Work Group update to a little bit earlier in the agenda. I think those are all the changes. And Malcolm McNabb is remote tonight, so we'll be taking all of our votes by roll call. Announcements?
This meeting is being video and audio recorded. The next board meeting will be Wednesday, June 25th. There is no board meeting next week. Town offices will be closed on Thursday, June 17th, in observance of Juneteenth. And we have our fifth annual Juneteenth celebration at the African Meeting House at 29 York Street from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There will be a block party, live performances, crafts, tours, vendor marketplace, and food. And our one additional announcement is that the Nantucket High School graduates will hold their parade through town following graduation ceremonies this Friday, the 13th. The parade will start at 7:00. That's it.
Okay. So for anyone who's just coming in, the public comments from last week, there is a response being prepared. It will be on the website tomorrow. We didn't have it done for tonight.
And Select Board announcements, comments? Are we there?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I skipped over it.
No, that's all right. No, we've all gotten a ton of requests and questions about the short-term rental land court decision regarding short-term rentals in the old historic district. People can ask questions if they want tonight, but as our policy, they won't be answered for a couple of weeks till we meet again. So we intend to issue a frequently asked questions document by the end of Friday concerning the appeal of decision and try to answer as many questions as we can. So, you know, such as the effect on the ruling of vacation rentals and other properties, past and future bookings, et cetera. So if you wanted to make a public or ask a question tonight, you can. But if you want to have an answer sooner than a couple of weeks from now, you should email comments or questions to the town's Communication Office, and that is pr@nantucket/ma.gov. So pr/nantucket, pr@nantucket/ma.gov. So that's what I have. Thank you.
And I actually have one thing. I've been talking to Nat Lowell today. He is up at Brigham with a very serious MRSA bacterial infection, and he's going to have to undergo surgery tomorrow, so please keep him in your prayers. Anybody else? Okay. This is the public comment portion of our agenda for items that are otherwise not on our agenda this evening. And we do need to limit to three minutes, but I see Clifford Williams coming to the mic.
Do you mind if I just remind the audience to please keep conversations down when people are speaking?
Thank you. Good evening.
Cliff Williams. Last week, I commented on my concerns with the RFP with the African Meeting House. I was hoping to get some response back this week, but I guess what I'm trying to do was...
Cliff, that is on the agenda.
What's that?
We're gonna be discussing that.
Yeah, well, I guess my main concern, not so much to comment on that as the fact that I've asked for an emergency meeting, and I haven't heard any response back, so maybe you can fill me in when we get to that point. But I guess through you to Chairman McNabb of our committee, I was still seeking a meeting to figure out what went wrong with the RFP. Thank you.
Okay. Malcolm, maybe you can address that when we get to it.
Yes, I will.
Aye.
Good evening. Just state your name for the record.
My name's Luke Thornwell, and I'm on the Committee for the African Meeting House as well. And I just wanted to share something with you all that I think is important. I'm enjoying the process, and I think everyone's doing their best, and...
It's on the agenda?
Oh, do I have to...
So it's actually, can you make your comments when we get to it?
Oh, okay. I thought it was...
This is just for public comment for things that are not on the agenda.
Can I leave these open so you get some air in here? I can't open this. It's already been opened.
Hi, Mary Bergman with the Nantucket Preservation Trust. I wanted to make this comment at HGC, but HGC wasn't taking public comment. So I guess my first comment would be, why isn't the HGC taking public comment anymore? And the second comment would be that I just wanted to make an announcement. I know we've done a lot as far as house moving, talking about extending that demolition delay, which we voted, which the town meeting body voted on at the special town meeting. I just wanted to let everybody know that we've been working with the Current and Remain to advertise the house moves more, do little write-ups and profiles, and that's been working. We've been getting a lot of good responses. The Current's been hearing a lot of people are, you know, receptive. They want to see these houses, and they're seeing them, and they're reaching out to the architects and the agents. So I'm really happy to get some positive feedback, and I wanted to let you all know that we were doing that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Yep, oh, good. Good evening.
Megan Perry, for the record. My first subject was, I was wondering if we could get an update on where things stand with Wiggles Way, total cost to date, and where things are with the audit that was to be performed on that? Because my understanding was that we were gonna try to learn from the information provided by that audit for future projects along the way. And now that we have two weeks between meetings, maybe there's enough time to get that information collected and provided for the public. And then my second comment was, in the past, I know Select Board members have suggested asking questions if the public asks questions rather than doing formal FOIA's to get information. Sometimes when I ask a question, I'm told to do a FOIA. So I've done that a few times and not been given information within a timely manner or within the rules of FOIA's, and have appealed it to the state on a couple instances. And the state has sided with me and ordered the town to provide the information two times in particular right now on FOIA's. And I'm wondering if this board could maybe help speed that process up. Some of the information is in reference to comments that the Housing Director made at town meeting about information that would be available regarding the options agreement and how she felt that was incorrect or putting out incorrect information. So I'd love to receive that information if it is, in fact, incorrect. So thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I do, just a quick clarification.
Just state your name for the record.
Barbara Bergo, from Brewster again, former Chair of the Barnstable County Human Rights Commission. And just for clarification, I got a notification, an email this morning, thank you for, at about 10:53 or so, that the agenda was changed. I had already booked my ferry and was heading over here. So I just wonder, for clarification, going forward, what timeframe do we follow for changing items on the agenda?
I'm actually gonna answer that because that was a last-minute change because Dr. McNabb is not feeling well. And I, as a courtesy, moved it earlier in the agenda, but made sure that all the parties we know that are interested were notified.
Okay. So going forward, I would like just to know what the... Because we were here at one point in time when someone asked to be moved from the back of the agenda to the beginning, and we were told it couldn't happen. It was on the agenda in a certain format for some reason, so I just was looking for clarification as to what the rule is.
Barbara, it's at the discretion of the Chair to set the agenda or to make changes to it.
And the agenda has to be sent out by, what timeframe, 48 hours?
Not necessar... Well, it has to be posted, but not necessarily.
And there's no rule about changing it after it's posted?
Yeah.
Just clarification.
We shouldn't be engaging in this back and forth, and we will be getting to that item shortly.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, everyone.
Campbell, you can pull that down a little bit.
Move this forward. Okay. I had a couple of things.
Oh, just...
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm getting nervous. I'm watching the time tick down. And I'm like, I had to move the thingy, and now I'm losing seconds. And oh, no. So sorry, I lost my train of thought. But I thought I'd come in because I know... Campbell Sutton, for the record. I thought I'd come in because I know when I try to use my Zoom thingy, it seems faint. So anyway. So first, I'd just like to thank everyone, every sponged yesterday to the rollover or tip-over or whatever on Bartlett Road. It was fabulous response. We had our power back on by, like, I don't know, 8:20 or so. That was wonderful. All the summer people in the bright yellow shirts were really kind and courteous, did a great job directing traffic. So I just wanted to give a shout out to everyone because I know that was very unexpected. And, okay, so that's that one. The other one I have, it's been sort of sitting on my mind, has to do with our island home funding. I know there's, people talk about it being an emotional thing, and therefore we need to think about it more practically. But it seemed, when I look at it, it seems to me that we voted $6 million...
The island home is on the agenda tonight.
Right, but are you letting us talk about it?
I'll take public comment.
Okay.
As a sum. But you can ask questions then.
Well, then you'll get me muffled. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a public comment this evening? Okay. No new business, approval of minutes, warrants, and pending contracts? Questions?
On the one contract, what type of... We're getting 55 new bike racks. Are they the black racks, or are they, what are we? Replacement bike racks for various locations on island.
Drew Patnold has his hand up.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yep.
So Matt, these are galvanized steel bike racks, the traditional style. Some, I think about half of them are single-sided, and half of them are the double-sided style. So we'll be deploying those at various locations all over the island. Hope that answers your question.
It does. I just want to make sure that it's where we put... I'm sure where we're putting them, they'll fit, you know, in the decor. There's been an effort to... We had all different ones, and then we sort of settled on the black ones downtown and some others in other areas. And I just want to make sure. That's all. Thanks.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Our second? Yes, all four.
Okay, all those in... Who made the... You made the motion?
I started to make the motion, and then Matt spoke, so I will make the motion.
And I will second.
Okay, Matt will second, and we will do this by roll call. Matt Fee.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb. Don Holgate, aye, carries unanimously. That was items one through four. Now, we do have the African Meeting House Investigation Procurement Work Group update on the request for proposals. Does anyone have a deep concern that I reordered the agenda on this? I don't want it to come back and be an issue.
I'll make a comment. When I... You told me that it was changing. I assumed it was so Mrs. Bergo could make the boat home. I didn't connect it to Malcolm myself. I thought it was a courtesy because one night, we dragged on too long and should have bumped that earlier. So that was my assumption, was it was for that reason. So, anyway.
Okay, well, I'm gonna move forward if there's no objection, and turn it over to you, Malcolm.
So I'm giving you credit.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
And I apologize first for not being there present. This is an important issue to me, and when people talk about lack of trust, it really bothers me because it's part of my being and my culture. We did move the agenda because one of the items with the Board of Health, I was just not up to dealing with tonight. So fortunately, this is early on. The RFP responses are due July 2nd, and I have to apologize for the second time for what happened. I don't think we need a special meeting because I think we've corrected the error and that we will send amendments for it to the people that have received it. Seventeen people, institutions, were sent it, the RFP. Looking back at the last meeting, I think the whole committee, in a way, erred because when we went to that specific page, we were quite calm and sort of approved it. And as Chairman, I should have picked up the fact that we had left something out. And I'm sorry that happened, but we will correct it. I don't think we need a special meeting because that special meeting, we just talk around in circles about what we've already done. Again, the RFP is correcting, is being corrected, and responses are due July 2nd.
Okay, happy to take questions or comments. I know that two people wanted to speak under public comment about this. Clifford, Luke.
Clifford Williams. I mean, I guess that's good to know. I didn't see the corrections, or I didn't get an email saying there was gonna be corrections.
Mr. Williams, we'll get that to...
I want to address that.
And what I would appreciate, appreciate, if you could just drop me an email with a phone number, and I'd be glad to call you sometime tomorrow or Friday when I'm feeling a little better, and we can discuss this.
He said he gave you a thumbs up. Mr. Gibbs, could you just remove your hat, please?
Brooke Gibbs. There's four things on that request from the group that got left off. And one of them is geolocations of all the people involved and their alibis to see if they come back as accurate. There's just a bunch of little details of how the person who investigates this case has to have a certain Massachusetts certification and pass a certain bar for the state of Massachusetts. We've also not gotten the, Malcolm, to allow us to have someone from out of New England do this investigation because everyone in New England knows Massachusetts, and everyone in New England's affiliated somehow through police investigations or the police who can investigate it with the state of Massachusetts. So we've asked for someone to be from outside of that jurisdiction, and it hasn't happened. So we've three times now amended this RFP, and three times, things have gotten left out or put in or not the way they are. They're not supposed, they're not the way we've asked for them. They're not the way they should be. And I agree with Cliff that we do need an emergency meeting, and I think it should be public in this room and not in the trailer so that we can have a full, long discussion, not limited to three minutes, about what this is and how we're gonna get to the end of it as soon as possible because it's seven years plus another 18 months, and this could have been resolved in days, and it's not. And it's just, this is ridiculous. I could go on for a long time about this. So please, let's face this, let's fix this, and let's not pretend that it doesn't exist, okay? Because what Malcolm is trying to say as to that it, you know, amended, and then it just got pushed through and published, it's not what we asked for, and it's not what we're wanting. And it's not anywhere near what the public would expect of you and the Select Board to do in the investigation. It's trimmed down as tight as possible, and we've been distracted and deflected and ignored for weeks, and it's not okay.
Well, Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, please.
I think some of that information is not quite correct. I think there's legal issues about doing investigations. And if Brian was there, I'd appreciate if he would comment on the out-of-state.
He's coming up to the mic.
If you would go back and look at the video of the last meeting when we went through page by page by page, and almost every page was approved by the committee as a whole. And the page that did not include town administration was a mistake. The whole committee did not comment on putting it in, and as Chairman, I again made the mistake of not seeing that. I would appreciate Brian's comment on the other questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So some of what one of the previous speakers alluded to would be the means and methods of conducting it. And typically, in scopes and RFPs, it's generalized, and it does not get down to specific geolocations and checking alibis and those things of that finite nature. It's a generalized scope of what is being looked at, and a plan on how you would undertake that. In this case, as part of the RFP, the investigation is expected back as part of the response. So we are issuing what's known as an addenda. It is very typical in RFPs periodically that they have to have clarifying points. It's not unusual to do. It's something that we do with many of the RFPs. Things change, or questions come up from a vendor or from somebody who's read it and said, you know, we need clarification, and we issue an addenda. I will tell you that there was, there has been at least three interested parties. I have no idea where they're from, but they are, have downloaded and signified and intend to apply. Now, whether they will follow through or not, I don't know. But to the comment about the attempt to limit this to firms outside of Massachusetts, I think in one of the meetings, it was even attempted to limit this to firms outside of New England. The whole purpose of procurement under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B, is to have an open, fair, competitive competition. And in my opinion, as the Chief Procurement Officer, if we start to limit firms that could participate, then we're not having an open, fair competition. And the way that it would be addressed would be when we, when the committee undertakes the evaluations, and they review the evaluations and rate the responses. So that would be the way that I would address with that. I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have as well right now.
Okay, well, I'll go to Luke Thornwell.
I have a different train of thought. It's Luke Thornwell. I'm also on the African Meeting House. But if you guys want to continue on...
No, go ahead.
Well, my train of thought actually speaks to how I feel like, kind of what my job has been at the table. And I was originally asked to join the group. I told Mr. Barrows, I said, I don't feel particularly, you know, of any skill level to be here. And he said, all you have to do is observe, do your best, and pray. And for me, this attack on the church, it is, in my mind, it is a church. And its history as such, there needs to be respect given to its history. So it's an attack on the church and our people. And I feel prayer is a massive part of the discernment. And those people of faith understand how truth and discernment come and are delivered through prayer. And one of the things that's happened in our meeting that has caused me personally some distress in me not doing my job, and like I said, I think Malcolm and we're all trying to do our best, and I think it's kind of a policy matter, is that I'm not allowed to share a prayer. And in the very beginning of this process, Mr. Barrows and I, who actually go, funnily enough, to the same church, asked Father John to give us two prayers that we might contribute. And he gave us these two amazing prayers. And on the first meeting, I, in the middle of the meeting, we all introduced ourselves, and I was able to share prayers. But there was a significant pushback on that not being allowed and not policy and, you know, not procedure. And as the, and that was that. And the following meetings, the prayers got pushed further and further back. And then ultimately, I discovered that prayers actually, whenever they're said at a public meeting, are actually removed from... They're not allowed to be heard on Zoom, which means the bulk of people who are observing, and people of faith that are observing the process through Zoom, are not allowed to hear the prayer that's being said. Because I am allowed to say the prayer, Malcolm does permit me to say prayers before anything's officially open. But the benefit of community prayer is of such a high magnitude in terms of like bringing a higher level of discernment to what we all are trying to do, which is basically remove all obstacles and open all doors to discover, you know, where the truth is and where justice lies and where forgiveness is. That comes through the Lord God. And basically, I think my appeal to you today is to say, please... I will just mention another thing during the town meeting. Again, I've been by town administrators and by, I've been told, it's just not done. We don't do prayer. But I've noticed even in the Pledge of Allegiance, God's identified, and during the town meeting, there was a beautiful invocation of prayer. But then I noticed when I looked at the YouTube for the town meeting that it was taken away. And the 5,000 people, the 500 people that were there that benefited from it, but the 5,000 people that were there did not benefit from it. And I think that's a misjustice. And I think basically what we're doing with the African Meeting House right now is all about justice and all about doing absolutely everything that we can. And on that basis, I think we're obligated to bring, even if it's not, even if it's unusual, I think we're obligated to bring out loud in a, on the Youtubes and in Zoom these prayers that have been asked by the leader of the person who's trying to find justice for the church. And for all of us that are together trying to find justice and forgiveness, I would ask the Selectmen and Mr. McNabb to allow me to continue what my job originally was assigned to be.
Malcolm? Did you want to...
Well, I think Luke is quite, he can say a prayer before we officially start the meeting. He can say a prayer officially after we finish the meeting. I think during the meeting, some people are not comfortable with that. And I think a prayer is always helpful, particularly in such an issue as what happened to that wonderful historic African church. And we should be praying that something like that doesn't happen again. We should be praying that this community gets together and just finds a solution to these problems. But let's keep the prayers off the Zoom.
I think, I'm not sure... I will say this as a final note. For those who don't believe in Christianity, for example, a prayer is simply, it's harmless. But for those who do, it's extremely meaningful and possibly of great magnitude. So therefore, I think because it's harmless, it should be allowed to be heard.
Well, maybe more people will come to our meetings at the beginning and hear the prayers. prayers before we officially get going, because they certainly will help. And I think on this issue, as I said before, this community needs a lot of help.
But Malcolm, only, there's only.
I gotta get control of the meeting with the.
I've, I've said it, Madam Chair.
Can you all have a follow-up conversation about this? It's out the discretion of the Chair for, for your meetings. Amy?
Hi, Amy Eldridge. Two probably silly questions, but if somebody's picked in this, in, in the bid, and the result shows that something needs to be reopened, is that an option for this group to have this reopened? I mean, or is this just to investigate right and wrong and be, be done with whatever they find?
Now, may I answer that, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
It is planned that if the investigator finds something that needs additional work, then that will be brought to the attention of the group, and action will be taken accordingly.
Thank you.
I would feel, I would, I would feel like I have failed in this position if we just have a report, and we all, all go home.
I appreciate that. Thank you. My next question too is, is that you drive up York Street, there's been a green truck, we know it belongs to Mr. Barrows, and I understand it's embarrassing. We live in a community where terrorists are going up and down that street all the time, and I just really hope that at the end, everybody gets what they want, and everything can go to peace, and that can come down. Because I think it's really embarrassing for our summer visitors to driving up and seeing there that we can't in seven years figure out what the heck happened, who's responsible, and put justice to the church. So I just want you guys to remember that every time you drive by there, it's just freedom of speech, it's right to be there, but it is embarrassing, and I think that we need to consider that as we think about the hundreds of thousands of people who have gone up York Street and seen that sign for seven years. That's a long time, and that's embarrassing. Thank you.
Hi, again Barbara Burgo. And not only am I the former Chair of the Bonneville County Human Rights Commission, I'm a former Vice Chair of South Coastal Counties Legal Services, and for the Select Board, in, in addition to all that we've just heard, and to Select Board Member Fee specifically, I'm sorry to report that this has become evident to me, that this Article 36 process and the working group fulfillment of their mission is going to be arduous and time-consuming. We had hoped it would not be until we get to the end, if we get to the end at all. Clearly Cliff Williams spoke at length about his concerns that the wording of the RFP advertisement be more succinct and encompassing than the final copy, which was in the Boston Globe. I now hear, thank you, Mr. Chair, I mean, well, Chair of the Working Group and Select Board Member McNabb. But I cannot for the life of me understand why the entire work group agreed that the final draft of that ad be approved only by the Chair, who is also a Select Board Member. I, for the life of me, cannot understand how and why Mr. McNabb became the Chair of this working group when he is a Select Board Member. And the Select Board is one of the groups who is going to be investigated. Not trying to say that anyone is doing anything on purpose, but these upses just keep happening for over a year. Thus, it has become abundantly clear to me why the Article 36 Development Committee needed me to come from off-island to see things from a different perspective. Now, it has become necessary for me to obtain information to best serve your constituents, who in my opinion deserve more than this. More transparency, more trust, more clarity, more efficiency than we have provided them over the past 13 months of this still ongoing process toward justice. Remember, justice delayed is justice denied. I see there is a fifth annual Juneteenth celebration. To me, this cloud over Nantucket leaves you not much to celebrate. I have kept my promise and helped out where I can, but it has become clear to me that much more than my continued efforts will be needed, unlike what was said at one of the last meetings, that this group can get this done by themselves, those sitting at that table. This is obviously not happening. So, I have already had a meeting in the DA's office. I have requested Freedom of Information Act information from the Police Department, the Town Administration. I've requested a meeting with Senator Seer and Congressman Keating to inform them, inform them of this working group and Article 36. And I will keep on going up the ladder until justice just is. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Two comments. One, an advertisement is not the entire RFP. I suggest that people go online and look at the tape of the meetings that we've had. It's as open as anyone can read and see.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, I, this is, the addendum is going to be put out when?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I believe we're going to be issuing one addenda on Friday to make the clarification, because I think one of the key pieces that, if I'm understanding Mr. Williams' comments correctly, was the, wanted the wording that was inadvertently left out by myself, and I'll take responsibility for that, and when, before it was sent to Malcolm. They wanted the language specifically from the article included in the initial part of the RFP, which has been adjusted. And we did go back and watch the tape and found one other instance where they had requested the contract dates to be changed, which got overlooked, the start and end date, which is going to be done. I would clarify, though, that the committee actually authorized the Chair, Dr. McNabb, to approve the final draft, not the advertisement. We do not, and have not typically, put entire RFPs in an advertisement due to the sheer dollar, the cost of an advertisement. So advertisements are generally limited to specific, that there's an RFP opportunity, what, a generic information about what it is, with, with information on where it can be found on the town's online procurement website. I would also note, in an effort to try our best to find as many firms or reach as many firms as possible, we're able to find a, a listing through the Operational Services Division's state contract list, and did invite over 17 vendors specifically to review it and look at it, and potentially comment on it, along with putting it in the Boston Globe. And our news, the I&amp;M, it was also in the Central Register of Goods and Services and Commbuys. And I will tell you that many firms, we've had many procurements where there have been firms from many different parts of the country that have applied, because they all use what's known as aggregation services and look for keywords in, in advertisements for procurements, and then go and look to decide whether to apply. So, I do believe that there's been a very broad reach for, for this particular procurement.
Thank you. Ms. Burgo, do you have a question?
Through the Chair. Just a clarification. I do watch the meetings, and I did see that meeting. And I was supposed to be getting the, the opportunity to be a part of them, I thought, except I'm not getting the links on time. So I have to watch them after the fact, I can't speak on anything. Transparency is what we had talked about before. Former Chairwoman Moore agreed that it had not been quite as transparent. I believe Cliff is deserved of an apology, and I don't know what's going on, because transparency would have been that if he had known as part of this group that there was something missing, and it was inadvertently missing, and we're going to correct them, the fact that there's an addenda needed shows that something went wrong, even after they said that it would be approved if the wording was correct. It is not correct. I do know what I'm talking about.
Okay. Matt?
Just a clarification. With this addendum, will this be corrected? I guess that's for the group, or for Malcolm? You know, who, because sort of we don't want to correct three out of four, or two out of three, and be back here again? It'll take us forever. Is the, is the wording corrected?
It seems to me that they, the whole committee needs to read.
Yeah, so I haven't seen it, so I can't tell you if it's corrected.
Yes.
Okay, so let's, I, I think that that would be good direction to make sure that everybody reviews it before it goes out again.
Yes, that will happen.
All right.
Thank you, Malcolm. And I hope you feel better.
Well, thank you for asking.
Be tuned.
I, I will try to stay on.
Okay, if you need to leave, just let me know. Next, oh, I'm sorry.
I don't mean to be argumentative, but can I just make one point? I just pulled up one of the agendas. The link for the meeting is on the agenda. It's on every agenda.
Yeah.
And other people were able to join and be at the meeting live.
So noted that you can find the link on the agenda for the Zoom. Next up, we have Citizen Departmental Committee requests and reports. Halkeen Management requests for approval of transfer of management contract for Academy Hill for Halkeen Management, Inc. to HK Management LLC.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board. My name is Robert Bystrowski, a real estate specialist. We are here for a request for approval of assignment of the management agreement by and between Halkeen Management and HK Management LLC for the Academy Hill Apartments at 4 Westminster Street. The town is the owner and the ground lessor of the property, and Academy Hill Associates Limited Partnership is the ground lesssee. The date of the original ground lease is March 27, 1985. In 2018, the town entered a 58-year amended and restated ground lease. A separate management agreement was entered into between the Limited Partnership and Halkeen Management to manage the building. At the time of the original management agreement, Mass. Housing, Massachusetts Housing, was completing a refinance of the property, which was in need of substantial repairs and maintenance. Mass. Housing is the holder of the current note and the regulatory agreement. By letter dated May 2, 2025, Halkeen advised the town that they have been working on the transition of their involvement in HKM, which is Halkeen Management, and advised the town that they, over the past 33 years, have made substantial investments in affordable housing, and are entering a strategic alliance at this time with the Douglas Park Group and Norton Point to form a new management company, HK Management LLC. They are requesting the town's approval of the transfer of the management contract. Following receipt of this request, significant due diligence was performed, which included presenting Halkeen Management with requests for production of current financial statements, pending litigation status, and details regarding infrastructure and efficiency improvements which were made during its tenure. In the lead-up to tonight's meeting, there have been a series of efforts made, including communications with Andrew Burns, who is the President of Halkeen Management. He is available tonight to answer any of your questions. There were also meetings attended by the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager, Housing Director, Finance Director, and Town Counsel, Vicky Marsh, who is also available tonight to answer any of your questions. Academy Hill has a total of 29 units. 12 are subsidized, 17 are market rate, all are year-round residents. We have for our group an onsite tour scheduled for this Friday. The Town Energy Coordinator, Lauren Sinatra, is evaluating the efficacy of an updated energy audit. The last one was performed in 2018. And the Town Finance Director is working with our insurance broker to review and evaluate insurance coverage levels, both property and casualty. It is a staff recommendation that the Select Board approve and execute the documents as reviewed by Town Counsel. And both Mr. Burns and Ms. Marsh are available.
Did either of you want to make any comments before I go to the Board for questions? Questions?
I just have one small question. I'm curious what your definition of year-round is, and how you monitor it.
Mr. Burns, are you there?
I am.
Information was provided by your onsite manager.
Yes, we, we have an onsite manager who has been with the property for a number of years, from Nantucket, lives on Nantucket. In conversations with Wendy Almond over, you know, over the last month, there are, I think, you know, when you say year-round, there are year-round leases, and I think people do go on vacation. I think there's one person who spends two or three months in Florida, but is on the lease and lives, considers Academy Hill as her home. We know every resident, our manager knows every resident very well in the property, and we, that's the data that we assembled at the request of the professionals representing the town in this due diligence process.
Thank you. Vicky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In addressing that question, we should consider the fact that when this project was initially done, it was defined as affordable housing. And at that time, affordable housing only requires that the residents use this as their principal place of residence. So, I'm not sure where Halkeen had developed the idea that it was year-round as defined currently. You know, as we're working through a year-round affordable housing restriction, we're looking to 10 months of occupancy during the year. And this particular project, at least to the best of my knowledge, does not have that restriction on it, because it was, you know, it was originally refinanced in 2018. So, for the time being, I can say that this, you know, project does have a requirement, though, that the residents are, use this as their principal place of residence.
Yes, go ahead, Brooke.
So, I'm curious. I, I ask the question because we've, the, the, the definition of year-round and, and the availability of year-round deed restrictions is something that's evolving rapidly, and I'm not asking in a way to make judgment at all here. I'm just, I was really out of curiosity. And to, through you, Madam Chair, to Attorney Marsh, is there the potential to request or add year-round deed restrictions that, that have that 10-month definition to this arrangement with HK Management on the property? I just, I didn't know, just for consistency. And again, we're focused a lot more on year-round housing than we were, you know, years ago. So.
So, in response to that question, the, the current projects, most of them have just a requirement for principal place of residence as being the affordability requirement. And that was established by EOHLC and Mass. Housing. I don't know going forward. I, I think that they're working, I know a lot, on trying to get a definition in place for year-round housing restrictions. I'm not sure, though, if any of these projects have, any projects that are coming up have that requirement with EOHLC. I haven't dealt with Mass. Housing on a, on a project that's being planned currently. So, I think that this is a question that we can perhaps go back to EOHLC and ask them if they have considered being able to address this question. and ask them if they have considered being able to address this question and change the requirements in, if not the projects that are existing, perhaps in going forward in future projects. And I'd be happy to work with the housing director, Kristy Ferentzela, on possibly addressing that question. I know that we are working on getting a year-round restriction program out to the public. And so this is of great concern, I know, to the housing director as well.
Kristy actually has her hand up. Kristy?
Hi, thank you, Kristy Ferentzela. I just wanted to add on to Vicky's comments that this is something that hasn't been explored. But with the seasonal communities designation, it is something that we think we could pursue once the guidelines come out in the fall. So Vicky and I will continue to work together on seeing if this is an option either for future developments or anything that we can look at for existing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just add, from sort of the overall regulatory standpoint, Halkeen Management would have no issue with that at all. We would just need to go through a process, mainly with Mass Housing, in that HLCEOHLC is not really involved in this particular property. This was a Mass Housing restricted asset back, you know, in the 80s. So that we'd have to go back to Mass Housing to get their concurrence on the change in the restrictions. But I don't, I think it's, as soon as the guidelines come out, we can start working on that.
Thank you. Malcolm, I knew you had your hand up.
I was just wondering about the definition of affordable housing in this property.
Mr. Burns?
It is, the units that there, I forget exactly what the number was. Was it 16 units are income restricted?
12.
Yeah, they're income restricted. And now, as to the exact level, unfortunately, that's not my, you know, I don't have that particular information at the top of my head. We have a number. Some of them are 50% of AMI, some of them are 80% of AMI. I don't, I am not familiar with the exact income restrictions on, at Academy Hill, on those units.
I don't need the details, just the fact that there's a percentage. That's all. Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Just, Mr. McNabb?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. McNabb, it's 12 out of 29 are listed as subsidized. So that would suggest that that's the number. Just on the year-round versus principal residence, it came to us in an email from the onsite manager styled as year-round. I don't think that was a legal definition. But certainly, all the information we've gathered, and it is substantial, you know, supports the fact that the folks that are there, this is their principal residence.
Thank you. Anything else? Is there a motion?
Well, I've got just one sort of, so this is a strategic alliance between Halkeen and another entity?
I would defer to Mr. Burns.
Yeah, so is that, I'm just saying, a strategic alliance? You know, is this a sale? Is there an exchange of money from the new partner to the Halkeen entity for this alliance? And if there is, how much, what percentage and how much? Thank you.
We have, the structure of the transaction is that we are selling the assets of the management company into the new management company, HK Management LLC. Management companies don't have a lot of value, frankly. We have retained 40% ownership. The total value of the company was $1 million and a half. And we manage 70 properties all around, mainly in New England, but up and down the East Coast. So it's a fairly large company. We manage 7,000 units of affordable housing. The management company is a platform that takes care of the properties. And as I think, you know, the property today is in great shape and is in good condition. And that's been the hallmark of the work that we've done over the years. Yes, it is a strategic alliance, but it's also a strategic alliance that allows, you know, we have been in this business for almost 40 years. And we started with, you know, very few units and a small footprint in the affordable housing world. It's a larger company now. And my objective as the president and CEO was to find a partner or partners that could continue the tradition and the momentum that we have built in the affordable housing space, if you will. And that's where the strategic alliance with Douglas Park and Norton Point has evolved to this request for approval of the transfer.
That answer your question?
Just a follow-up. So it's 40% and 60%. You've retained 40 on 1.5. Did they pay 900 for their portion? Like, how does this?
Most of it is seller-financed. We are taking back a big chunk of paper. Management companies are not very profitable.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is when we signed the, previously, when the town signed an amendment to add years to it, at the time, I'm not sure we, as a town, quite understood what that meant. That enabled the entity at the time, which isn't exactly the people that are here now, to, I believe, I can't remember the numbers, but it was to take out debt of, you know, a substantial amount of debt. And some of it went to fixing the building. I'm not sure all of it did. That's why I think the due diligence was so important. And sometimes these things happen, and they are sort of beyond our knowledge base, beyond our expertise. And I think it's important that the town does the things that we did. I'm going to vote for this. There were a lot of complaints a few years ago, and that seems to have been cleaned up. I haven't had those, I haven't been getting those emails or those calls. That seems to be cleaned up. And it seemed to have, you know, we have done a lot more due diligence on this round than we had done previously, which I think is a positive for the town. But I'm just highlighting that sometimes the town has to look at what the motivation is, you know, from the various parties and make sure that we, that we, as a town, are being, you know, are being covered. And so I feel like, I feel like we've done a lot more work, and I am in favor of it. But, you know, sort of, I'm giving a little of the back history. Thank you.
Oh, I fully appreciate that. And it has been, you know, when we took over management of the property in 2000, it was literally, it was involved in a lawsuit with Mass Housing. And it was a very complicated acquisition and financing that we were finally able to accomplish in 2017, 2018, that enabled us to put resources in cooperation with, you know, the refinancing with Mass Housing to bring the property up to the standards that it is at today. And I think that I've been in and out of the property over the last six months several times. And it is, it's gorgeous. And I think that it's in great shape right now. And I'm, we're very pleased with how it's evolved. I mean, there's a waiting list. It's a lovely asset.
And a follow-up. And I've had these conversations in previous years with Mr. Burns as well. And in the town, we also realize that the CPC has been very helpful with a lot of the windows and a lot of the other historic parts of that property. So, you know, we have partnered and have contributed as well. So thank you.
And Vicky, is your hand still up or did you put it up again?
No, I had put it up again. I just wanted to add just a little context that this property was refinanced in 2018. And when I worked on the refinancing with Mass Housing, they were the ones that were trying to actually be able to preserve this property and the units that are in it to remain on the shy list. And that was a really important consideration for Mass Housing, so that this property, that the affordability of these units would not go away. Because this project was developed in 1982, the affordability restrictions would have expired. And so this allowed us to be able to make sure that those units remained on the shy list for the town. And most of the refining, a lot of the refinance money was pledged to go to the improvements that were made. And so when we looked at some of the financials that Halkeen has sent us to review, we paid particular attention to the reserve account for capital, you know, improvements and to make sure that they're still depositing funds into this capital account on a yearly basis, which was required by Mass Housing. So they have met those requirements that Mass Housing established to try to preserve the condition of the property and make sure that the units stayed on the shy list.
Thank you. Is that anybody ready to make a motion?
I will move approval.
Is there a second? Okay. By roll call, Matt Fee.
Aye.
Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb.
Aye.
Don Holgate, aye, that carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Next up, Erica, I will hand number three over to you. Obviously, number two's been postponed until our next meeting on the 25th to go through the list of applicants that want to speak.
So last week, we ended at Cultural Council. I got away, got ahead of myself with Finance Committee because Matt Mulcahy wanted to speak. So I'll start there again. And I know there's a couple of people here tonight that were part of the first group, so I'm going to have them come up after. So first is the Finance Committee. There are four seats available and seven applicants. Martin McCarroll, Jill Veeth, Anthony Guterman, Chris Glouacki. Shelley Lockwood was on your list, but she has withdrawn her application. Rick Atherton, Kit Murphy, and Matt Mulcahy. So I don't know if Martin McCarroll is here. If you want to, if you want to just go up to the mic and introduce yourself and you can let the board know why you're interested. And you can pull that mic down so they can hear you.
Erica and board, Martin, just before you start, now might be the time to mention that the appointments.
I was going to do it after.
Okay, I just want people to.
Do I want me to do it now? Okay, so there's a little, just so everybody knows, sorry, Martin. We have had to update the timeline. One of our members is not going to be at the June 25 meeting. So we're going to delay the committee appointments to the next meeting, which is July 9. And actually, I'm going to ask the board to vote to extend this, all the seats that are due to expire on June 30 to expire to July 9.
Can someone make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor, by roll call, Matt Fee. Tom Dixon.
Aye.
Brooke Moore.
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb.
I have to find my calendar, but candidly, aye.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr. McCarroll.
And I'm an aye.
Okay, sorry, I thought you already said. So we're good with that. Mr. McCarroll?
Yes, I'm Martin McCarroll. I live at 106 West Chester Street in Nantucket. I submitted my application for a variety of reasons, but let me give you some of the background on that. My first trip to Nantucket was in 1966. I came on the Nobbska. We had a stateroom when we came over. And I would make the observation, those 59 years, this island has changed a lot. I've summered here every year of my life, sorry, every year since I came here. We bought a house in 1986. We became permanent residents in 2006. We became full-time residents, 365 days a year, except for vacations, in 2017. We've been actively involved in the island as residents and as volunteers throughout the time we've served here. We love the island. By way of experience, I, in college, I was an English major. In graduate school, I had a concentration in finance. And my work experience was largely, but not exclusively, on Wall Street. I might add, for those who worked on Wall Street the early part of my career, if you look at my resume, you'll find it's tarred by fairly rapid changeovers. That was a period of bankruptcy on Wall Street. I suffered from that. And my work experience on Wall Street was really focused on communication, financial analysis, decision-making, and business management. In several instances, I was selected for leadership positions. And I finished my career 16 years as a principal of the firm. I've been actively involved in not-for-profits during my lifetime, too, both on the island and off the island. It started before I stopped working. And the three instances I'm most proud of, the work I did for Bloomfield College in New Jersey, Bloomfield is a small liberal arts, poor college that focuses on first-generation college graduates. I also served as board chair of Nantucket Community Sailing, treasurer and board chair of Nantucket Community Sailing. And I've just finished a six-year stint as St. Paul's treasurer. In my business career, I've got recognition for performance. And as a volunteer, I've been asked to take leadership positions as well. In terms of Finance Committee, I think by background, I'm well-qualified to serve on the Finance Committee. I'd be a new voice. I haven't served before. I bring, I believe, a lot of relevant experience in decision-making and problem-solving. I'm interested in the island, solving its problems, and helping be a part of this island. I've long proselytized that Nantucket faces, I'm sorry, proselytized, that it was big enough to be interesting, but it was small enough that individuals could make a difference. And I'm ready to step into that role tonight, right now. I believe I'm thoughtful, that I listen, that I can help make good decisions, and I respect my peers. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Jill Veeth, do you want to speak?
Hi, I'm Jill Veeth. And I have been a year-round resident since 2014. I can't believe it's been 11 years. Don't I say that loud? I'm married. I have two teenage daughters, arguably harder doing that than being on the Finance Committee, admittedly. But one of them graduates from the high school this Friday, so I'm super excited about that. I've been on the committee for two terms. I'm asking for a third term primarily because I've really learned a lot. And I've learned a lot under our really amazing chair, Denise Cronow, who's now retiring from the Finance Committee, as well as Stephen Mori, who is the vice chair. And I feel like the experience I've had and the knowledge I've gained, I could take into my next term and maybe add some continuity, but also just bring that experience. I have also served on the Capital Program Committee. And I was at CRC, and we did the Town Council Study Committee. So I feel like I've really kind of gotten a broader view of things. And over the years, we have such an interesting form of government that it takes a while to learn how it works. And I was surprised about how long that it did take. So I ask for you to continue my term for one more term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Next up is Anthony Guterman. He is online, so I'm going to let him speak.
Hi, good evening. I hope everyone can hear me okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board. Apologize, couldn't be in person tonight. I'm currently just outside of Boston on some business. But I certainly appreciate, thank you for the consideration of my application to be considered to become one of the members of the Finance Committee. You can probably tell from my accent. I certainly don't sound as an American, but I am. I'm in the middle of five kids born into a U.S. Air Force family. But I was raised and spent 35 years down in South Africa, because obviously, formative part of my, of my, of my life and where I met my wife, Debbie, who you, many of you were introduced to last week when she put her application forward for a different committee. I've been many years. I've been many years working through where we wanted to settle and where we come, where we, where we wanted to be in our lives together. And I started coming to the island by invite, actually, from Denise Cronin and Michael Riedemann to come and join them at the Nantucket Wine Festival in 2012. And it took about maybe two or three hours to understand why people talk about Nantucket with the, with the Revere that they do. We kept on coming back and further and further. We became owners in, in 2016, and we recently became full-time residents on the island, and it's our only home for the future. I look forward to being able to contribute to the island and, and, and thinking about not just the present, but also the future orientation. By way of background and things I've done, I bring 28 years of deep leadership experience in, in business in large global corporates. I have a background in mergers and acquisition. I spent time in international strategic business audits and came across to the U.S. via Germany in 2003, where I spent a substantial time, a part of my time running large and increasingly larger leadership roles, and mostly in human resources, that is the business partner for the CEOs of three of the largest parts of the business of the Siemens Health and Years portfolio of companies. In that time, I've spent a lot of time working through cycles of strategic planning, budget planning, consideration of expenditures and where we invest, working with committees and in teams within that environment to help them find their way through, always with that mindset of what is good governance, why it's important to have that kind of advocacy that people require, that the island and its expenses require, and that people require. So with that in mind, it is also around how I go about doing things. I'm a very open individual. I have a very high level of altruism in my profile. I listen with curiosity. I ask lots of questions to understand and to be guided and to help aid other people. I'm a strong collaborator and a strong team player, and I'd love the opportunity to work with something as important as the Finance Committee going forward. So I appreciate the consideration and look forward to feedback from this committee at a later time.
Thank you, Anthony.
Next up is Chris Glouacki.
Hi, Chris Glouacki. Been doing this for a little while now, and I think I have a really good track record of being really well-prepared and helping the committee get to good answers. And I think also with Stephen stepping down, I can bring some historical perspective from time to time. So appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity in the past and hope to do it again. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. Rick Atherton, sorry to put you on the spot last week.
Members of the Select Board, my name is Rick Atherton. I've been a resident of Nantucket full-time since 1992. I've participated, fortunately, in town government through participation on the Finance Committee and as a member of your board for three terms. I stepped aside and did not rerun in 2017. I'm seeking appointment to the Finance Committee because I think we have lots of very difficult, important, in some ways monumental, decisions coming to us. And I think as a member of the Finance Committee, my experience in town government and my experience from stepping back and observing and continuing my interest as a member of the community stands me in good stead to understand the issues. I recognize that as a existing committee member of the Rhodes and Wright Way, just want to be clear on this, I, I support that members of the Finance Committee should not serve on other Select Board-appointed committees, and I would withdraw my application if I'm fortunate enough to be appointed, and I am seeking your support for appointment. In my written piece, I mentioned two areas of special interest. One is the schools. Our family has two grandchildren, one in the elementary and one in the middle school. And my wife was a big supporter of the Friends of Nantucket Public Schools when our eldest daughter was enrolled for a couple of years in the 90s. Schools are important to our community, and they're a substantial portion of our budget. They don't always get the attention from the Finance Committee, although they go through extensive sessions with them, but I think it's important from a community point of view that our interest in the school's quality and impact on our community is, is heard at the Finance Committee level. Other than that, I think the ongoing capital items are going to be the real critical issue that you're going to receive recommendations from the Finance Committee and from the Capital Program Committee. And I look forward to, with your support, if I make it, to be participating in those decisions. We're going to have a tough time doing all of them in, as soon as the people supporting them would like to do, and I suspect many of them are going to have to be spread out over a number of years. So again, I respectfully ask for your support. I wanted to come again tonight because I did, and I remember as a member of the Select Board, be respectful and be here in person before you. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you.
Lastly, Kit Murphy. Sorry to put you on the spot last week, too.
I just want to thank everybody for the do-over after last week's minor snafu. I guess I'll start with when I came to Nantucket. It was in 1984 when I arrived. I took my first vacation on the island in Scanset, and that's pretty much been my home ever since. Bought my first home in 1990 and also got married that year in the garden at the Shauna Claire. The next year, I became a permanent resident and voter, and I've attended every annual town meeting and voted in every election since then. I have degrees in finance and Spanish and also a concentration in accounting, primarily fund accounting and cost accounting. I have a third, or had a 30-plus-year career with a New York City bank, started as a credit analyst trainee, as everybody seemed to do back in the day. And when I retired, I was managing a department with a team of lending officers, and my portfolio fluctuated between 750 million and $1 billion, plus or minus any given year. After I retired, I was a financial consultant. I would calculate values of, on family-owned and closely-held middle-market businesses, primarily as they were looking to be sold or giving testimony in a court case. I think I've served on over 30-plus boards between New York City, Albany, Mexico, Boston, and Nantucket. They've been a mix of corporate boards, not-for-profits, and municipal committees and the like. I've usually served as the treasurer or a member of the Finance Committee and sometimes as a fundraising chair. I mentioned that previously I had been on the Nantucket FinCom back in the day. I'm afraid this will tip everybody off to my age, but Phil Bartlett was the Chair of the FinCom Committee then. I'd like to serve again because obviously back then I realized what an integral part of the island governance the FinCom Committee is. And like several people have pointed out, it's going to become even more important as we tackle some pretty large decisions that we have, have coming up. The past two or three years, I've probably attended 40-plus meetings in person or by Zoom, not only Finance Committee, but Planning Board, the ZBA, the Select Board, and a few other sundry committees. Attending these myriad committee meetings has given me a pretty deep and really good understanding of our governance process and the workflow that exists between the committees, the Select Board, and various town departments. I will freely admit, and as some of you have experienced, I don't always agree with decisions made, but I, I do respect the process and I do ultimately support whatever decision has been made. I'm sure I will, at times, disagree with my fellow members of the Finance Committee, and I may be in the minority on a vote here and there, but I will always respect everybody else's opinions. I think people can do two things at once. I think we can be independent thinkers and also team players. Finally, I just want to say you folks have an embarrassment of riches. You have seven really terrific and qualified candidates. Any choice you make will be a good choice. That being said, I hope I'm selected for the Finance Committee, and I'm looking forward to serving again and continuing to give back to Nantucket. Plus, there's absolutely no reason not to have more women on this committee and every other committee on Nantucket, and I look forward to the day when the Finance Committee can be a majority of women. Again, thank you for your time tonight, and seriously, thank you, folks, for everything you do. The amount of time you, you give to us is monumental, and we may not always say it, but I think most of us do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kit. Next up is the Historic District Commission Associate. There's one seat available and one applicant, Constance Patton. I don't know if, Constance.
Good evening. Not used to being on this side. Good evening, everyone. I am here for a reappointment as an Associate Member to the Historic District Commission. I'll be short and sweet. I've enjoyed my last three years. I've learned a lot, but there's a lot more work to be done, so I would appreciate your support for my selection for another term. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Nantucket Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So we had another applicant withdraw, John Wise. So we have one seat available and now one applicant, Mary Mack. And Mary is online, so I'm going to let her speak. Go ahead, Mary.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I'll, I'll just give you a quick background on who I am and why I think I'd make a good candidate choice. I've been advocating for affordable housing on Nantucket in an unofficial, unofficial capacity on and off for about 30 years. My introduction to the Nantucket housing problems began when I moved to the island in 1991. I was in my 20s and looking for a job waiting on tables. And a friend of mine warned me about the housing situation, and she suggested that during my job hunting, I answered the inevitable, inevitable question of, do you have housing? With a yes, in order to get hired. So I took her advice and was hired at the Brotherhood, and luckily, I found housing soon afterwards. In 1997, I took a position at another establishment that was looking to expand their scope and hours, but I ended up losing that job because a few other people integral to the core expansion couldn't find housing. So back then, I, I was thinking about the, the problem, and I, I remember physically, I wrote a letter back then to the INKI, and it was published in the INKI Letters section, and it suggested that the town of Nantucket create financial incentives through paying homeowners to rent out their spaces and cottages year-round, and I also detailed other types of incentives as well in the letter. I've continued to spread this idea of using existing housing to help solve the housing problem since. We moved off-island to Virginia for 10 years, and during this time, I went to nursing school and became an operating, operating room scrub nurse at the University of Virginia Medical Center in Charlottesville, Virginia. And it was while working at UVA Medical Center, where I witnessed a lot of human suffering caused by the price gouging of basic human needs. I became a very vocal advocate against this type of practice. Patients were turned away if they could not show the ability to pay enormous costs. We moved back to Nantucket, and during this time, I worked as a volunteer for patients for affordable drugs. I spoke at the Boston State House and in Washington, D.C., fighting for affordable prescription medicines for patients. Sadly, many people are priced out of life-saving medicines in much the same way as regular people are often priced out of decent housing. I volunteered in the same capacity for Boston's Bright Care Alliance, which is an ancillary arm of a think tank named the Loun Institute. They fight for healthcare equity and equality. We were instrumental in creating awareness around the price gouging of insulin and the deaths that this causes. A small vial of insulin, analog insulin, costs around $5 to make, and its retail price is approximately $850 a vial and higher. Our, our protests went viral on social media and helped to bring about legislation to cap insulin costs. I started sharing ideas again on utilizing existing housing, creating incentives with Nantucket Housing Advocates, and also in 2018, at a meeting at the Handlebar Cafe on Nantucket, I also remember sharing the idea of people conservation, conserving people and preserving Nantucket families in perpetuity. There was a collaborative spirit at that meeting and email correspondence. Unfortunately, from 2018, like later on that year, and 2022, I had a health problem, a serious heart problem, and I had a heart transplant. So then I got better, and then in early 2023, I brought up the idea again to some, to some of the housing leaders of paying homeowners to rent out year-round to Nantucket people to create financial incentives in order to utilize existing housing, and I detailed how it could work as a stopgap measure to mitigate the housing crisis. Then I found out about the Lease to Locals program and emailed the company Placemate. I detailed to them that I thought Nantucket needed their help, and they asked me for, and I gave them other housing leaders' contact information. I continue to think about and help with the housing situation. I routinely attend the Tuesday bimonthly meetings at the, of the Nantucket Affordable Housing Trust on Zoom, and I've been following the meetings since early 2023. I've learned much about what they do, and they do a terrific, a terrific job to house people that the community desperately needs to stay here. I think I have a lot to continue to offer in an official capacity, serving the community and collaborating with the Nantucket Affordable Housing Trust. I am a strong, passionate advocate for social justice and change. I am a creative thinker and a good listener. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thanks.
Next up is the Nantucket Historical Commission. Originally, we had this listed as two seats available and three applicants, because I realized I had not updated Diane Coombs' status, so her seat is now listed as vacant. So we now have three seats available and three applicants. First up is Abby DiMolina. Abby is also applying for the Planning Board alternate seat, and I told her that she could speak on both because she's got her tiny, quiet little baby in the back.
Thank you.
Good.
Baby sleeping, for the record, so. I just wanted to say thank you, guys. I'm looking to be reappointed to the Historical Commission and the Planning Board as an alternate. I've learned a lot over my first term of both. I think there's been a lot of really good work. There's a lot of people who are really passionate, and it's great to learn from them. I've been a resident of Nantucket year-round, I think almost five years, but I think, like a lot of other people have alluded to in their speeches, there's a lot more to be done, so I'd love to be reappointed on the Historical Commission. I'm the secretary. I enjoy doing that, and I think there's a lot of work we can still do. We want to make sure that historic preservation's a really important part of the master plan, if you will, so being able to be on both of those groups and also on the Planning and Economic Development Commission, it just makes sure that we're highlighting some of the really important things to the island and our year-round community. And so, thank you. I humbly request you reappoint me to both.
Thanks, Abby.
Thank you.
Next up is Linda Williams. Linda is online. Linda is online. Go ahead, Linda.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I'm usually in the room. I was just spring cleaning, and I'm still in my sweatpants. As you know, I've expressed interest in continuing my work with historic preservation. I've been involved with that for 43 years and past chairman and longtime member of the HDC. I still, to this day, because I work on a lot of historic properties, work with Holly. I appreciate Holly immensely and her contribution to Nantucket's preservation issues. And I would love to serve with Abby, just to boost Abby, and she's done a great job on the Planning Board and the Historical Commission. And I'd love to continue to be involved with the CLG and other things that are going to be happening. I think I can contribute, having been here 52 years, year-round, and every summer before that. I think I know Nantucket pretty well, but I'd appreciate a chance to continue to work with historic preservation, but in a different way, because the Historical Commission has a different goals and objectives than the HDC does. So I'd work both sides of that coin. Thank you very much. Go back to spring cleaning.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
The third applicant is Caroline Baltzer. You heard from Caroline last week. Planning Board alternate, one seat available, one applicant. Abby, you just heard from her. Real Estate Assessment Committee, one seat available and one applicant. Lee Saperstein, who is in the audience.
I'm so anxious to speak, I drop everything. Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, I'm Lee Saperstein. And simply for the record, I'm standing here to show my willingness to serve on the Real Estate Assessment Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Next up is the Roads and Right-of-Way Committee. Three seats available and two applicants.
Thank you for letting me come before you. I'll give you a brief overview. I came to Nantucket in 1961, worked summers at Snow's Bicycle Shop until '72, when I purchased the business and sold the business in 1983. So as far as my involvement with Nantucket, I moved here year-round in 1990. I was a member of the Town Charter Commission, and it took us two years. We had to reorganize midway through and became the Town and County Charter Commission, because the chair, Bill Schirmer, at the time, realized that we needed to do two charters, one for the town, one for the county, and that would streamline some of the decision-making functions of the board. I worked for the Nantucket Conservation Foundation for 32 summers as their Middle Moors Ranger. Currently, I serve on a couple of different committees. I'm chairman of the Cemetery Commission. I'm chair of Wantacomet Water Commission. I'm on the Land Bank Commission, and I've been on the Roads and Right-of-Way Committee for approximately 20 years or so. In all of those committees, I've learned quite a bit about the town of Nantucket, about how local government works. It's been a marvelous education in terms of understanding the needs of the community and how the different issues that come before the community get resolved. And I also understand the influence that these various committees, boards, and commissions that you, as the Select Board oversee, how that impacts the operation of the town. So that's my background, and I thank you for letting me come forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Next up is Rick Atherton. Sorry, I should have had you speak on the other one.
I think I'd just repeat what I mentioned to you before about the committee structure issue. Again, my name is Rick Atherton. This is the Roads and Right-of-Way Committee. I stepped up for an open position with no applicants six years ago. I've enjoyed the committee. I think it needs to develop a better relationship with the Select Board and make sure the committee's working on issues that are important to you, as well as to the members of the committee. So if I don't make it to the Finance Committee, I would be happy to serve again. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next is the Scholarship Committee. There's two seats available and zero applicants, although one of the incumbents did apply late, so she'll be considered in the next round. Steamship Authority Port Counsel, one seat available, one applicant, that would be Nat Lowell. Tree Advisory Committee, two seats available and one applicant, Emily Molden, but I don't see Emily. Zoning Board of Appeals, Lisa Botticelli. I don't see her online or here. And then ZBA Alternate, one seat available and zero applicants, although the incumbent did apply late. So going back to the beginning, trying to think. Oh, so Airport Commission, one seat available, two applicants. Last week, you heard from Michael Levitt, and Walter Flaherty is here today.
Hi, Walter Flaherty. Like everybody else, I've been here a long time. I think I came in 1978. I've served on the Park and Rec Commission years back. I was on the school council for a long time, years back. I worked out at Cape Bear for about 24 years. I was involved with the Airport Commission back then. I haven't been involved for too much lately, but I'd like to get back involved. I typed up a little resume, so you can read that, so I don't spend too much time talking to you. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you.
Next is Board of Health, one seat available and two applicants. Last week, you heard from Louisa Lindgren, and Carrie McKenna is here.
Good evening. Thanks for your time. You know, I guess my career prior to arriving on island was working across systems, including local boards of health. And I feel that those skills and experiences really kind of helped me to, I think, be a contributing member to the board. When I was before the Select Board, three years ago, for the initial appointment, one area that I expressed interest in was the behavioral mental health issues concerning the island. There were activities that were occurring, existing activities, and being part of the board, I got to learn and understand how those functions, and also that in the interim in time, and again, I'm not taking credit for this, but just, I think that the attention being paid to the behavioral mental health issues on the island and with the... There's been some exciting, innovative new programs that have come out of it, and with a lot more cooperation among agencies. If reappointed, and one of the things I guess I would bring is that I've been there, and I've learned a lot of how the board functions. And the bigger thing I learned was is the really keener understanding of the town departments, the different committees and the nonprofits, and how their interaction and working together really impacts the community. And that is a critical aspect of really making... Meeting the needs of a community when you're 30 miles out to sea is working together. You know, I've been involved with the food pantry in a variety of roles since I've been on the island. I've assisted families with transition planning, which is a special education activity, which was my career before. You know, vaccination clinics have been part of those, as they've happened. And me and many other people on the island, as a result of the increased focus on mental health and behavioral health, I'm a QPR trainer, which is Question, Persuade, and Refer for Suicide Prevention, and also Mental Health First Aid certified, which, again, another opportunity that has been made available to the island folks. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your attention, and I hope to be reappointed to the Board of Health and continue doing what we've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Council on Aging, four seats available and five applicants. You heard from most of them last week, but Diane Flaherty is here tonight.
I'm Diane Flaherty, and I was on the Council on Aging several years ago. And when my term was over, I decided not to run again just because of time restrictions. And now I feel that I have the time to run again. That's why I put my name in. And I have to say, it's one of those committees that I felt actually does something, and I don't mean that sarcastically, but I felt that we really worked hard, and I'd like to be reappointed, or not reappointed, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane. I was going to introduce Sarah Ellis for Cultural Council, but she is no longer on as an attendee, so she had been on. And that's it, I think. Did I miss anybody? I don't think I missed anybody. So again, committee appointments are going to be delayed for all of the applicants. They will happen on July 9th. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Erica. Matt, can you just chair for a second?
Okay.
I'll be right back.
All right. We are on...
Number four.
Number four, Nantucket Preservation Trust, request for preliminary view of historic preservation restriction. And this is for Mariah Mitchell, 1-3 Vestal. Nantucket Preservation... Yeah, Mariah Mitchell, 1-3 Vestal Street.
I'll take this. So this is just a preliminary review of the historic preservation restriction. Your policy for conservation restriction and historic preservation restriction policy states that you get a preliminary review in case you have any questions before it goes to Town Council. And I know that Mary Bergman is, or she is or was, here?
She's online, Erica. She snuck out.
Oh, she's online, okay. All right. So if you have any questions, Mary can... I don't think she's on.
I'm here, yeah.
Oh, you're on there, okay. I was on the wrong list, sorry. If you do have any questions, Mary's here to answer them. But otherwise, I would just ask that you vote to forward this on to Town Council for review and the issuance of a report.
Does anyone have any questions?
I don't. It looks pretty straightforward, so I would make a motion that we move it along to Town Council.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, Malcolm? Do you have any questions?
No, fine.
Roll call.
All right, so we're going to do a roll call. Yeah, so all those in favor. Burke?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Malcolm?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, number five?
So similar, just again, for your policy of preliminary review. Mary from the Nantucket Preservation Trust is here to answer any questions, if you have any. And I would ask for a vote to send this to Town Council for review and issuance of a report.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Brooke.
Mary, how often do individual homeowners put preservation restrictions on their homes?
How often? You had one, we had one last year. I would say, so we... The Nantucket Preservation Trust has over 25 preservation deal restrictions, and I think about half of them are private homes and half are public buildings that are usually receiving CPA Act funds that then have to put a restriction on.
I just find it interesting that a homeowner would choose to do this. I think it's really cool. So happy to make the motion.
Yeah, I have a question. Mary, are the incentives the same for individuals as individual home as it is for a business? Or do you not understand that?
Yes, there is a federal tax incentive that could be made if an individual is donating a portion of that preservation. Really, there's only one person on the island who's done this that I've worked with. And if they are like naming the Nantucket... They're making a donation of the value difference between the assessed value of your house before you put the restriction on and the value of the house after the restriction's been put on. So the difference there in the assessor's value then becomes like a federal tax deduction that you're able to take as an earned income tax credit, with the caveat that I am not a tax lawyer and I do not understand the United States tax code. And it's becoming more confusing to me every single day. But really, what you see as other incentives is people are really concerned about rapid growth and development on Nantucket. They are concerned that the homes that they have worked on are going to be sold, gutted, and knocked down. It is surprising, I think, that we are in a town with a local historic district where there is a lot of local control, and yet homeowners, more homeowners now than when I started this job, are interested in preserving those structures. Yeah.
No, thank you. I know there's... I've done some of this. We've done a facadeisman in preservation restrictions and used historic tax credits on Orange Street, and it's substantial what is available for people if they, you know, sort of dig into it. So I hope more people do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I think it's terrific. I'll make the motion of approval.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, by roll call. Matt Fee?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb? And I vote aye. That's unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Have a good evening. So next up, we're on the Nantucket Film Festival.
Dina Weatherly is going to review this. Dina is going to review this.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Dina Weatherly here. Thanks for having me. I'm the Cultural Affairs and Special Events Coordinator for the town, responsible for special event permitting. I bring before you a request from the Nantucket Film Festival, represented here today by Jaclyn. They are asking for a banner application for their 30th anniversary of this annual film festival. The request is to have a banner hung on Main Street, or banners hung on Main Street, from June 24th to the 30th to just celebrate and bring awareness that this is the 30th year of the festival. The last time that they did this was 10 years ago for the 20th anniversary of the festival. And the banner has already been approved at the SAC and HDC meeting last week on June 3rd, alongside some other banners at locations on Oak Street, North Water Street, South Water Street, and at the high school, with only a restriction for the one at the high school being a single sign. Any other questions? I will turn it to Jaclyn, but if you have questions specific to the special event permit, I'll be happy to answer as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We couldn't believe in the agenda meeting that it was already 10 years ago that we put these up last time. But it's consistent with our policy. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
No, I'd move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call. Matt Fee?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Brooke Moore?
Aye, with congratulations on 30 years.
Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last up, the Town Managers Report, review of options for our island home. Oh, well, we do have committee reports as well.
Thank you. So at the Select Board meeting on May 28th,
Thank you. So, at the Select Board meeting on May 28, we reviewed, if you recall, the votes taken at annual town meeting and the annual town election for articles that were, that needed both votes. And the island home article, just to quickly re-review it, did not achieve the required two-thirds majority at town meeting, and did pass at the election. However, as we know, both votes are required, so the project is technically not approved. At your May 28 meeting, we indicated that we were developing some next step options, alternatives, for your review at tonight's meeting. So, we have developed a presentation here for you. It's, it's pretty high level, not extraordinarily detailed with the options, because some of them do get pretty complicated, and they are going to need additional professional services to really vet them with dollars and things of that nature. So, I'm going to turn it to Deputy Town Manager Rick Sears, who will be calling upon members of our team from time to time to explain things. Who are here, Bob Eisenstein from Eisenstein and Flaherty Associates, Peter Holden, our Administrator, Michelle Monroe, the Business Manager Assistant Operations, she does everything there, and Craig Piper, our Architect, and we have some other folks online. Rick?
Great, thank you, Libby. So, what we really want to, what we want to do, thank you for that introduction, you stole my first few slides. But I just want to say, before I start this, it's only been a few weeks, so this is very preliminary. So, when we look at numbers, and we look at things that we could do, please judge them against how much time we've had to actually develop thinking against around this. So, if you could go to the agenda page, please, Erica. So, there's just a couple items at the top that we want to use to level set the conversation. And then there's four project options that we've identified that are, we wanted to talk about tonight. Next slide, please, Erica. So, let me just talk, talk to this, but we put it in here just to, to one, demonstrate the strong support the project has had in the past with the override in 2021, with the eight and a half million dollars in 2022. And yes, there are the votes. We needed an additional 35 noes to be yeses in order to have passed at the town meeting. And the vote at the ballot was sort of 54% to 46%. So, I'll leave it to people to judge whether that's a strong endorsement by the voters or not. One more slide, please, Erica, just to level set what our project guidelines were, our guiding principles, as we developed the current proposal. I'm not going to read them all, as you've seen this many times. But for people who haven't, the guidelines point out things like, we want the new project or the new building to be non, have a non-institutional look and feel. We want it to have current technology. We want it to have single, single patient rooms. We want it to be PFAS-free, and we want it to be an attractive place for people to work, to, to assist in recruitment and retention. And so, with all of the projects that you're going to hear about in a minute, there's trade-offs to this set of guiding principles. And we try and display it more for visual effect than trying to go through each one. But there are trade-offs for, from this, from these guiding principles for everything we talk about going forward. Next slide, please. The, we wanted to just share with you how we, what levers we use to try and make these, put some proposals together to make this more attractive to the voters. And so, the things that we think that impact cost, that we can adjust and that are in our control, the number of beds, whether we have only private rooms, or we have shared doubled rooms, whether we keep all of our sustainability goals, or we eliminate them, some of them are expensive and have, but, but do have payback periods, whether or not we think about future flexibility. Do we, as we evaluate these projects, are they, can we add on to them in the, in the future? Or are they just final decisions on, on what the, what a new facility could look like? And then the square footage of the building. So, as we step through these options, hopefully it's, it's evident which of the levers we've pulled as we begin to share these, and the trade-offs with the guiding principles. Next slide, please, Erica. So, the, we have four options we're going to walk you through. First one is to sunset the new OIH project and prepare for closure, renovate the existing, not rebuild, but renovate, take the current project scope that we've all been looking at for the last 18 months, and look at some cost reduction measures, and then a total project redesign, all new thinking, but at Sherburne Commons. There's probably a fifth plan on here, which we didn't put on here, but it's all, any other plan, like new locations, different care models, and things of that nature. But we're not looking at those tonight. So, if you can go to the next slide, please, Erica. So, the first option is to sunset the project and prepare for closure. And sort of the question we got here is, what does closure look like? From the DPH perspective, the town needs to do two things in order to, initially, in order to begin this process. One is, we need to send the DPH a letter of intent to close. And secondly, we need to send them a letter of closure and relocation plan. And it's that second one that is more, more of the work. And you can see there are the things that we need to do. We need to notify the residents. We need to prepare counseling for the residents. We have to make efforts to place them elsewhere, consultation, family, family meetings. We need to do medical record storage. And of course, we need to freeze admission. So, the timing around this is a little complicated. So, when we submit the letter of closure, the clock starts ticking, and we have 120 days for residents to vacate the facility. We'll know somewhere within 14 to 30 days whether our closure plan has been accepted. So, we only have 120 days. There's a possibility that we might get a 60-day extension because of our remote location, but there's no guarantee to that. So, there will be a lot to do in a short period of time. Next slide, please. There are other things beyond the DPH that we need to think about. Beds are scarce on Cape Cod. We've talked about that, or at nursing homes generally. We've talked about that quite a bit. Every resident and family must approve the transfer site that we're suggesting that they go to. We need to, separately from that, we need to do, sorry, no, not separate from that. We also need to find places, and because the beds are scarce, and because we're remote already, this could be, it could be a little bit more protracted than saying, I'm in, I'm in Chatham, and I need to go to Plymouth for a new nursing home. And then separately, we do need to pay all the costs for moving people as we close. We have to ensure their travel. We have to get them there. We have to escort them to the new nursing home. We have to have staff to do that, and we got to pay, we need to pay for their travel. Next slide, thanks. And then, to complicate matters, we understand that when you try and do this, the process tends to become highly politicized. There's lots of people who have opinions on it, state and local regulators, citizen groups. There's potential lawsuits. All these things can delay the process. And then separately, we also need to do, we need to better understand the financial impact of closures, of the closure, excuse me. And that's going to require quite a bit of study and attention. And we need to recognize that this is going to be a very large lift for our Human Resources Department, as we try and place employees in new roles, as we think about separation agreements, as we talk, and we think about union negotiations. So, it's, it's a very, very long list. As we talked about this as, as a group, we kind of think of this as our last resort, from a recommendation perspective. And so, this slide is intended to show how much of the guiding principles we will attain by closing it. And obviously, it's none of them, because it's just no longer applicable. I'm going to stop here for questions, because I, I don't know if there, if anybody wants to ask questions about the DPH process. We have Bob here, Bob Eisenstein. Matt?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was originally going to ask, what happens if someone doesn't want to leave within 120 days? But then you answered it on the next screen. They will sue, or they'll do other, you know, they'll do other things. And what if you can't find placement? I mean, so what if we're, what if there's no placement available?
It's Bob Eisenstein, thank you. Eventually, you can force, it gets kind of political. We've done closures before. At the end of the day, if you've used all reasonable accommodations to try, you know, to try to give them their first choice, DPH eventually will make a decision, if they need to, to force people out. It's a last resort. The point there is, you really have to jump through all kinds of hoops. It's just very, very arduous, difficult task. We've had to do it. Most of the time, it's worked out, 99% of the time. But you could always have that one family. We've also had some situations where one family will just, you know, refuse and refuse and refuse and delay the process. So, most of the time, it works out. But in the end, if they need to, they'll force the issue.
Thank you.
Tom?
Rick, I think I might be staying in the obvious a little bit here. But I, if this were to ever come to pass, the idea would be that it would be out there way beforehand, and then submit the letter, give the 120 day, right, like that, it wouldn't just be like 120 day, yeah.
Well, I think, I guess you all would make that decision in it, at a Select Board meeting, and with some forward start date for the letters.
Got it.
That would be my expectation.
Madam Chair?
Through you to Rick. A freeze, however, then stops new revenue as well, right? So, so now you have an increasing operating deficit during the period of time where you're preparing for closure. Just as another point.
Yeah, so there, there's still going to be significant costs to taking this route that we'll have to get funding for. Malcolm? Malcolm, you're muted.
Here you go. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, what's the average length of stay of a resident?
Oh, Peter, you got to come to the mic. Somebody needs to come to the mic.
Taking all the residents in, the average length of stay with the short term, long term, and all that, is 53 days, if you take all the years and all the residents.
So, it's, it's about a year. So, would it be possible, in this scenario, to just stop accepting patients?
It's 53 days, not weeks.
53 days? So, if we, if we just say, we're not accepting anymore?
It does depend on short term, long term. I mean, if you took-
It would kind of, it would empty itself, without having to deal with all these issues.
Bob's coming up too.
Yeah, excuse me. Let me rephrase. I think there's two buckets of different residents. For the short-term patients, they may be there for 53 days. But we have a significant number of patients that are there long-term. I don't know the exact number, but there's about 60% of our residents are Medicaid, meaning they're there for years, years and years and years. If the question is, I mean, it, it gets back to that same discussion. There will be a tremendous cost, any way you cut this. If you just stopped admissions, to your point, forget your name, yeah, there will be a tremendous cost. And as you reduce revenue, you still have to staff up for those number of patients. It becomes a real difficult situation. And every time we've gone through it, you, you do take a major financial hit. So, any way you cut that, it's going to come down to a cost factor, I believe.
Madam Chair, I have one more comment?
Staff.
Could you legally not take long-term residents? Could you, could you legally take only short-term as you're waiting, as, if you're trying to do this?
Are you talking in the event of a closure?
Yeah, say you, say we were, say we, say that we were forced to, and we're forced into a closure situation, could you not take, not take, do you have the flexibility-
Yes.
-to not take long-term?
Yes. As part of the closure, you have the ability to, to quote, do an admission freeze. That's part of your closure plan, absolutely. And the, and the DPH, that's part of the plan. You stop admissions at a certain point, you notify Department of Public Health of that point.
But I'm asking, there's two, there's two categories of patients that I'm asking about. Can you only take ones that are only going to be there short-term? That's my question. So that you can continue to get revenue, continue to serve people, because you may have long-term people who are there for years, and it may take years to close it if you-
If you want, I mean, you could put that in your closure plan, but that becomes a difficult, you know, that's musical. Then, then you still have to end up closing at your date certain. That's, that's the final point of a closure plan. What you do in, in the interim, you, you could probably arrange for that, but to mitigate the revenue, I see what you're saying.
And without, so could you do, sorry, could you do it without a closure plan? Could you, as a policy, and I'm not suggesting we do this, but as a policy, could you just say, you know what, we are now going to focus on short-term, and we're not going to file the closure plan, because we know we only have 120 days. Once we do, but we're gonna, you know, we're gonna target this, you know, short-term and those types of things. Is that legal or probably?
That's, that's a different discussion, I think, as Rick mentioned. There are some other plans we could take a look at. The difficulty there is, you have to be careful not to discriminate and not take Medicaid. So, it's, it's a mixed bag. But that would be for a future discussion. That, that gets into the whole question of just downsizing without closing, and figuring out how to maximize during, and that would be a different discussion offline.
Well, then, Madam Chair, could I follow up? I mean, that, that may be an option. Listen, there, there is no good solution to what we have here. And whatever we do is going to cost money. So, if it's going to cost money to perhaps not take long-term residents, which of course it will, it, will that be less or more than spending over $100 million in continued deficit for a new facility? Those are the, I have to see those kind of analysis.
Yep. As we flagged, we really haven't done that financial analysis. This is sort of intended to be, here, here are some options. If there's any that particularly appeal to you, we will dig in deeper. If none appeal to you, well.
Well, Madam Chair.
That's sort of the idea here. We're really looking for some guidance from you, if you like us.
I just don't want, I just don't want a big red cross about option A yet.
That's just saying the guiding principles really aren't fulfilled if it's a closure, in terms of how the new facility was designed.
Right. We may no longer have guiding principles. We have to deal with the fact that we have a major issue here that's going to cost a lot of money, whatever we do.
Yes. So, I think that we're trying to narrow it down to see, so that things can get dug into deeper. Go ahead, Rick.
Erica, if you could advance the slide, please. So, the second option is to renovate the existing, our island home, renovate, not rebuild. Just, should just say, we have no plan for that. There have been some prior studies about rebuilding, and it, and those studies highlighted how difficult that would be to do. If we, if we were to do that, we'd need a new funding source. We have two and a half million dollars left in the eight and a half million. But that money cannot be used for any planning for anything other than a new home at Sherburne Commons. We would no doubt end up with a pretty substantially reduced bed count. We would still not have private bathrooms or private showers. We'd probably have some other improvements in some of the common areas. But there may be things like hallways, which we simply cannot make any wider. So, some other impacts of that is, we believe that this would cost, if you could advance the slide, please, Erica. This could be quite expensive, given sort of a useful life. This is not a new 50 million, a 50-year building. This is a renovation to a building that's already 40 years old. And we know it's in a, an area where we have coastal resilience concerns. The building's not in a flood zone, but we know this, we know that area. Additionally, if we try and renovate, when, when you renovate substantial amounts of a building, you need to bring the whole building up to code. And so, that gets pretty expensive as well. And I'll just say this, the DPH requires waivers for anything that, any non-compliant element. So, as I said, if we can't widen the hallway in a renovation, we need to get a waiver from the, from the DPH. And that's not a foregone conclusion that we could ever, that we could get that. I think also, there'll be intense logistics as we move people out, well, find new places, move people out, the residents, excuse me, and then do all the work. new places, move people out, the residents, excuse me, and then do all the work. And then we have to, we have to dovetail that timing into bringing them all back at a date certain, I assume, for, for a newly reopened, renovated Our Island home. We'd have staff retention issues, which we'll probably have to leave them, let them go, or furlough them for the two, however long it takes us to build the new facility. We've got costs around placing the residents. And I do have a little bit of an operational risk concern as we reopen, because who's to say we will be, it's hard to hire people on this island. Who's to say that we can get 40 staff back in to a new, renovated Our Island home if they've been, if we've let, if they haven't been in our employ for the last couple of months. So, this would be a very large and complicated lift for everybody. And as we talked about it, we, again, from a staff perspective, thought that it wasn't not really something that we would recommend. So, if you go to the next slide. And so, this is just sort of a visual of those guiding principles, and we think that if we were to renovate it, everything we've struck out and read there, we will not accomplish. We will still accomplish, accomplish a few things that you see still in the black font. Next slide, please. The next option is to take, is to modify the existing plan that we've been talking about for the last year and a half for a new OIH at Sherburne Commons and apply some cost reduction strategies. The first and probably most significant is to eliminate one wing. We would be able to add it in the future. We would eliminate the solar on the roof, the PV arrays. Again, we could add it in the future. We would reduce the shelf space in the basement, so reduce the size of the basement. That's a forever decision. It has some, some implications. We could eliminate the construction of new Sherburne staff housing that we had agreed to and reuse the existing and place it where we were going to build. Of course, that will require negotiation with the residents of Sherburne Commons. There are a few other items that we haven't really bottomed out just yet. That, that group, that set of modifications may yield somewhere in the way of $19 million worth of savings. Again, I want to say it's preliminary, requires considerable review, and I really would discourage people from trying to hold us to those numbers at this point in time. You'll see the line that struck through at the bottom, which was, we originally had thought that perhaps we could do this modification, design it, and get it ready for a special town meeting in November. But we, as a group, discussed it at length and came to the conclusion that, no, we would not be able to do that. And we, this would have to be a 2026 annual town meeting item. If you could go to the next slide, okay. So, I just, this slide is just--
Rick, question? I, I want to point out, I believe, well, you may get to this, but if we reduce the number of beds, we reduce the revenue and therefore increase the operating deficit is a consequence--
I'm gonna get that in a second.
Sorry, okay.
Didn't get the deck ahead of time, so. If you could advance the slide, please. So, because eliminating a wing is the biggest cost savings or modification, I just wanted to show it to you briefly, which wing it would be. So, it's the one in the red, needless to say, but the reason we chose that one, that Selshaw wrote at the top, is because the nursing station is at the top in the middle. So, we don't lose anything in, in terms of our, you know, the activity of the nurses, the visibility of the nurses, their ability to respond quickly. So, it would be that bottom right wing that we would eliminate. Go to the next slide, Erica, please. So, some of the more of the impacts, to Brooke's point a moment ago. The bed count, if we're going to go singles for singles, as a comparison, the bed count goes from 45 in the current plan to 31. Or, we could have a mix of eight doubles and 23 singles and still end up with 39 beds. We will have, depending how you want to put this, to Brooke's point, we will have lower revenues from a lower census. We'll probably also have increased energy costs because we don't have the, the solar. We'll have less storage space, and one of the benefits of the storage space is you buy in bulk and you can be more cost-effective. All of these things around the operating costs, we still need to dig into. We don't know what the mix will be in the new building. Perhaps the mix of patients will be a much higher-paying patient, so maybe we offset some of the lost revenue from the fewer, from the decreased number of rooms. We haven't quite gotten that far yet, but we acknowledge that we need to understand that better. Programming losses, if we go to 31 beds, or even 39 for that matter, we'll probably have a reduced capacity for short-term rehab services. That's both a programming loss and a revenue loss. We'll also lose out on the 16 additional bedrooms from the to-be-purchased Sherburne Commons housing that we are going to move down to the wastewater treatment facility. And all of this will require a negotiation with the residents of Sherburne Commons. You go to the next slide, please, Erica. So, again, preliminary numbers. Since we have the numbers for the project to start, so failed plan, sorry, means what did not pass sufficiently at town meeting. The original plan was $134 million. We think we have it down to roughly something like $115 million. That's the project cost. You'll recall that we had some funding, already existing funding sources, the eight and a half, and then we had, we have 7.585 that the finance director believes is still a reasonable estimate of OIH retained earnings that we could use to help fund the project. We've removed the sewer revolving fund and any sewer retained earnings because there's no, there's no longer any homes going down there, so we didn't feel that we would probably be able to use sewer funds for that. And one other item, one other thing is, we have put back into the cost of this modified plan, funding for the work to create this new plan. So, so, so that's accounted for. So, if I could just go to the next slide, and you'll see with this, we've struck through the guiding principles that we will not, we think we will not achieve with this modified plan. And probably the most significant one of them is top middle, which is the single patient rooms. Then to the final option--
Just a question on that one. The retained earnings are $7 million, $7.5 million. Are those fairly recent due to the override, or have those been accruing for a few years?
So, they, well, Brian, you probably know with better detail, but they are, it is a growing number.
Thank you. So, that's a good question, and they, they've been accruing, I think, even before the override, because you have to remember, we can't budget for the CPE. And prior to the override, the majority of the retained earnings were created as a result of the receipt of the CPE. But there's also the impact of the additional census. When we do the budget, we budget for, say, 35 in the census, and if we have 38 or 39 or 40, then that additional revenue flows there as well. So, I think it's a combination of multiple different factors is why it's accruing. Some of it is the difficulty in staffing. That all flows into the retained earnings on an annual basis as well, so.
Yeah, when you're not fully staffed--
Right, when you're not fully staffed and we budgeted, that, the unspent money goes in, flows to the bottom line into retained earnings as well.
Ballpark, how much is it a year, is it going up right now? A couple million a year, or?
Probably, yeah, roughly depending, but, but again, the majority of that couple million is really all related to the amount of CPE that we're getting on an annual basis, which has historically been about between 1.5 and 1.7 on a yearly basis.
Okay, thanks.
So, the final option is simply a total redesign of a new OIH at Sherburne Commons. And that could include, this is, this is really a clean sheet of paper, that could include a facility with less than 30 beds. Obviously, there's a bit of a risk here as we transition to something like that. How do we go from 40 to 30? And what if, when we get to the new building, we're not at 30? We can build to the smallest footprint instead of what we have tried to do and create a really nice living space for our seniors. We can eliminate geothermal, that's a rather, rather large expense in the program. And there's probably a lot of other things that we can do, but we, you know, if we want to go back to the drawing board, reestablish the guiding principles, we can, we can design just about anything. We probably cannot, well, I'm just going to say, it'll be very challenging to do that by the 2026 annual town meeting. But mostly, for a total redesign, we're going to need a lot of guidance from, from the select board and others as to what, as to what we would want to design, or what we should ask our designers to design. And then if you can just go to the next slide, which, again, this is simply, we don't know what, what guiding principles would be preserved in a completely redesigned Our Island home. And that's the extent of what we have for you tonight. Any more questions we could take?
I think maybe there's some public questions.
Campbell has a hand up online, too.
Campbell, I'll come to you next. Amy Eldredge is at the mic.
Amy Eldredge, I just have a couple of quick questions. So, right now, the Island Home gets $5 million a year with the prop two and a half override to cover the lack of reimbursement on Medicaid, Medicare and Mass Health. In the original plan that was voted down at town meeting, what would that budget look like? I mean, we're talking that's going to have to double or quadruple to help fund and offset those costs with the increased number of beds?
So, the override remains in place. It grows at 2.5% a year. We, as we modeled the five-year outlook for the first two years being the current OIH, and then the next three years being the new OIH, we, the override as it stands covers the operating piece. There is, there is the additional debt service of $8 million a year that we need to solve for. But from an operating perspective, not from a debt repayment perspective, we expect that the current override growing at 2.5% a year would, would be sufficient.
That would be sufficient with the increase on the number of beds?
No, this is in, this is, sorry, I'm answering the question for the 45 beds.
Yeah, 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 that's what I, that's what I meant.
We're looking at decreasing the beds.
Right, but in the old plan, that was 126 million. I just want to understand, like, if that had gone through, what that additional request on the town would be to the taxpayers? Because, I mean, I know this got voted down, that's not really going to be what it is, but you have to understand what I'm thinking now. If we take a reduction, that's also going to go up, and I understand that, but I have serious concerns about the cost. I'm not against an Our Island home at all. I mean, I know that's what it sounds like, but I'm not. But I just think it's a lot of money being asked for a lot of things. People's taxes are going up on the assessments, let alone what you're asking us for new DPWs, potentially for new schools, all these things and affordable housing. At some point, like, it's, it's, you're going to be chasing out the people you want to be working at Our Island home, because we can't afford to live here. And it's, you know, people forget the assessments. People are building houses next door to me for $10 million, and I'm going to pay all my assessments, and then I'm going to be asked to foot $500, $600, $700 additional this year to cover DPW, Our Island home. I mean, it's just, at some point, we have to make some decisions, and I understand, but when I look at the number of people that are in there and, and what that money could be going towards the new school that would service a whole bunch of more people, I, I understand it. If they could come back with a better plan that was a little more cost-effective, but it is sticker shock to see $126 million for 40 beds. That's $2.77 million a bed. I think it just, it, it needs some serious looking at. And I understand it. I wholeheartedly feel awful for people that are going to have to think about other options for their family, but, I mean, it's a lot of money either way that you flip the coin. And, and I, the operating budget's going to triple with a building that--
I think I can answer your question, Amy. I think the, the answer is, it's going to go up $8 million a year. It's going to go up $8 million, which is the debt, because the, the five and a half growing at X is going to cover the operating. And there's, now, that isn't guaranteed forever. There's a bunch of other things that can happen, but, you know, Medicare and other things are in play right now. But I think, yeah, so there's, there's isn't guaranteed--
No, I understand.
--as it's looked at over the five years.
But I'm also in my head thinking that, like, at the old bed rate, that reimbursement's going to go up because we're going to be covering more. What, what is the number of people who, like, how many people are paying private care versus who's on Mass Health, Medicare or Medicaid? Those are things that I'm looking at, that, let's just say it's 50/50. That reimbursement's going to go way through the roof. Like, I mean, it's just stuff that you have to think about. And I've been there, done this, and, you know, the Island home was, was good to my grandmother in some points and not good for me in other points, but, and you guys are all well aware of my story, but I just, it's a lot of money to be asking for people when you're talking about possibly needing giant, brand-new schools and, you know, I mean, there's a lot of money that's going to be coming at us in the next five years that I want us to take serious look at. Thank you.
And I think we all agree with you. I, I think it's why Rick Atherton's coming out of retirement. You know, I think there's, a lot of people share that view, so.
Tom?
Yeah, I, Amy, you just made some really good comments, some things that I've heard from many people. And I don't want to make it sound like I'm teasing one little thing out of your comments and pointing it out, but something that you said was a little bit more cost-effective. And I think back to the committee's work, spending all this time on it, and town admin, and Dawn, and all the folks spending so much time on it. And that if, if, so, the whole project was subject, as everyone knows, to a public bid process, and that was put out there. And those, those bids came in as they, as the true cost because of Nantucket, building with Nantucket in design, because the HDC had requirements, because we're an island 30 miles out to sea, et cetera. And I think if the project had come back at $90 million or something, the ballot and the town meeting vote may have been exactly the same. And I think that's hard, I think that's hard to get across to some people who haven't been following as close as yourself and some other who are regulars and are not on the committee, is that it's, it's not like this is a private project and, and we can just accept the, whoever's going to build it. Unfortunately, it doesn't work like that. 30B procurement is what it is, and those numbers are going to be similar. So, I think that's something that we strongly, and I think we all are thinking about that, but we need to, the community needs to realize that if, if we put whatever out to bid, that it's going to be likely the same, similar universe of numbers, and the cost is going to be the cost. And so, that's, that's the kind of discussion we're having here today.
Even the renovation of the existing building, which is logistically extremely challenging, is going to be millions, millions of dollars to end up with less beds in a building that's not going to last as long. I mean, the, the only other large thing that we haven't talked about, and I have gotten a couple of emails on this, is we could reconsider as a community whether we want to sell the existing site to lower the cost. Because no matter what we are, we are looking at, a lot of money, and we already have spent over $6 million that we still have to borrow. That's already done for trying to, for doing this design. And then the cost of closure is going to have some pretty significant implications. So, we, I think we need some guidance from the community. I, some people have been reaching out. I haven't had a chance to get back to everybody yet, but, but it's, the, I, I look at saving $18 million and everything that we give up, and it doesn't make sense to me, although I think that that's, that's the easiest path to stay in the business and reduce and do a reduction-- and reduce and do a reduction, but we don't end up with the same thing. We're not servicing the same number of people. And we, we don't have future.
Have we thought about, did the committee look at offering, putting an RFP out to a private entity to come in, take the plans, take the location, and operate it, because they could build it for substantially less, and do something like we just did or have done with Alkeen? Has it, was that considered at all? And someone talked at town meeting, I think it was overly rosy, I don't believe it would be how he was talking about it, but, anyway.
I would want Bob to speak to that. While it might be less expensive for a private entity to construct, actually, it would not be, I don't think, because they'd be constructing it for municipal operation. No private firm is going to operate the facility at any remotely chance of a profit, so they, why would they run it?
We pass this by, even like my company, for example, and, and just to return on investment, as a private owner, developer, whatever you wanna call it, it's such a different animal here, as you guys know. I mean, I, I think the reality is, just from my own personal experience, it's, it's one of these rare situations where the municipal ownership probably is, I mean, I don't wanna say the right way, but it's probably one of the only ways to go. I don't think a private developer, given the, just, just take operational costs alone, construction would be another bucket, but just take operational cost of running a facility here on the island, the same things we struggle with. But it is, it's kind of a sad situation to say that that may be what the goodwill of the, of the, of the town is doing to, to really fund that. And I don't know what, I don't know any other way to look at it. You could, you could still get a second opinion on that, but I, I run this by, you know, our team, for example, I mean, you know, we've talked about that, that would make sense, we've, we've been here for a long time, but when we looked at the, the models that we could, it, it just didn't make sense financially.
Yeah, and I wasn't thinking of them running it for us, I'm thinking of them running it for themselves.
No, no, same, same, same thing, we, we did too, sure.
Yeah, okay.
We do have to contribute $15 million a year to make them profitable. The five and a half override plus the eight and a half debt service, and if they don't borrow as cheaply as we do, it's probably more than eight and a half.
Right.
So, there's implications all around. I have two people online that I have been waiting. Campbell Sutton.
Good evening, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, super, thanks so much for this opportunity. I have a lot of thoughts, so I'm sort of gonna start right off the top. One of the things I've thought ever since town meeting is the town and community seem to be able to come up with millions of dollars per year for able-bodied people that can work. And the non-paying, the non-voting taxpayers don't seem to have a problem with it. However, when it comes to taking care of those who are no longer capable of caring for themselves, there seems to be a lot of reluctance. And I, I'm heartbroken over that personally, that I, that our community feels that way. Now, I just wanna give one example. So, a few years ago, we voted $6 million in perpetuity for affordable housing. And I believe that afforded us $148 million in borrowing capacity. Now, that may have changed based on, you know, the current situation on the bond market. However, that's still $148 million in borrowing capacity. Then, we, I, I believe that we passed another $11 million just this year for affordable housing, right on top of the 6 million, and 5 million coming from the CPC. Now, it seems to me that if we, if, if, like, it seems to me if $148 million for affordable housing had come as a number before town meeting, they would have rejected it, I imagine, right? But they didn't, because it was 6 million, plus 5 million, plus another 6, plus, every year, we're adding to that for the young families and able-bodied employee people. Now, it, we have a, we have a situation in which we have a really big number out there, $126 million. That's a lot, sure. But it's a one-time deal. It's not like, oh, we need $126 million every year. We need it this one time. And personally, I think reducing beds when we already have 40 beds being used seems, um, it just seems like a bad idea. I think that if you're not gonna do the right thing, don't do half the thing. Maybe that's, that's it for now. I, I really, I was so disheartened at the vote, and, you know, my other issue is, I, I knew at least 10 to 15 people that couldn't go to town meeting, because there's really no handicap access, like, there's no way to park, there's no way, you have to walk a long way, so I think people that would have voted for this did not have the opportunity to. And, and that's very discouraging to me. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Campbell. I appreciate your passion about the subject. And, I mean, do remember that this, this was voted favorably by a majority. Donna Martino?
Good evening. I actually, I am a non-voting taxpayer. And personally, I think we do need some sort of Our Island Home facility. My concern is, I, I think we really have to study this project and explore as many options as possible. I wondered if two smaller projects would work? Has the idea of adding, let's say, short-term critical to create a wing at the hospital, which might help as far as staffing and so forth, because it's already at the hospital? And maybe long-term care somewhere at Sherbin Collin, Sherbin Commons? In other words, maybe not create a huge, big project, but at any rate, I think it's important to review this again. It's a lot of money, and Nantucket does deserve some sort of Our Island Home. We just have to study this more carefully. Thank you.
Just a couple of thoughts on that. The hospital has not indicated wanting any part of this. I don't think that they would have any room to add, anyway, and there are, then Bob could speak to this, there are, there are standards for nursing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's a, it comes to a licensing issue. You can't mix and match long-term care in a hospital. They already have swing beds. But the other thing to point out is the same ownership of hospital on Martha's Vineyard, they just sold their nursing home. So, MGB, you know, Mass General Brigham is not gonna be in the business of, of nursing home. That's just not gonna happen. There is a possibility of sharing informally, if that's what she's talking about, but the licensing would, would really preclude mixing and matching beds in a, in a hospital.
Yeah, they're, they're focusing on profit, things that make money. They're focused on profit, profitable aspects. They are not for, sorry to state the obvious, they're not, but...
This is something that's subsidized, it's the only way to have that.
It's an interesting idea to give them the stuff that makes money if they take it and keep the other and look at it and say, okay, are we losing less? You know, but, you know, I don't think it would work. Anyway.
Are you answering a question, or?
I just wanted to kind of clarify what one of the previous speakers had, had mentioned about the affordable housing. The six and a half million actually would have only authorized about $90 million in borrowing. What was approved last year at the, or this year at the annual town meeting, the 11 and a half million was comprised of the 6, 6.7 million dollar override and the $5 million CPC borrowing, so it wasn't 11 and a half million dollars on top of the override. In total, it's about $140 million worth of funding that has been allocated to affordable housing. Just, I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody has a clear understanding of what those allocations were for the discussion, if, and, and reference points.
Thank you, Tom.
And, and Brian, on the CPC funding, that's at if requested and is necessary. It was, the CPC authorized, and town meeting authorized that, and it's also a state program, so it's a little different.
Correct, and it's also that we would, we, just to follow along with that, we would follow the same process, which would be, anytime we wanted to use that money, we would go back and talk to them and present the plan to leverage that borrowing. So it is not, it's just not as easy as tapping right into that, those funds.
Thank you. Jill?
I just wanted to point, I thought, I wanted to say what you did earlier about, you know, in, when you identify what you wanna do, when you're looking at moving it to Sherbin Commons, I do think you should put down potentially selling the land where it is, if that, I think that would be a good thing to add in. I heard a lot of comments about that. I heard that a lot at Capcom, I heard a lot about that at ThinkCom. So I think that's a really valid bullet point to include going forward. I think that land is very valuable, it could be, you would know better than anybody in this room. But my other, my question is, and it goes a little bit to what Donna said, is there any way we can look after our own without it being a skilled nursing facility? Is there any way we can have a memory care facility that doesn't have those same requirements, so that we, I'm not saying it wouldn't be an expensive building, but maybe it might not be as expensive to run. And maybe it's identifying a smaller group of people who have an immediate need, and I just, I mean, I look at other organizations that we have here that are looking after people that have some of those issues, and I know they're expensive, but I, I just didn't know if there's anything, like, does it have to be this state-sponsored skilled nursing facility? So that's a big question I had the whole time.
I just wanna mention, there were memory care units at Sherbin Commons, and they were never filled. So, I don't know all of the details as to exactly why, Bob might have a little bit of background on that, but...
I think the ultimate answer is it, it does get to the level of skilled care that, that one's gonna require. And it's a, I mean, you could, there are memory care programs all over Off Island that are part of an assisted living, and it's a different license. They, they can do well, but the problem is, at some point in, in one's life, as they decline, the, the thought here, I think, is, and it's pretty much proven out off-island, is at some point people are gonna require a skilled level of care, which unfortunately, I'm, I'm, is the only license under a skilled nursing facility. So it's really a judgment call that, that I think everybody needs to make. It's not just memory care, I think it's every other, I, I appreciate what you're saying, most of that could be covered. The best-case scenario would be to have a continuum of care that does all of it, because we've talked about that, that's usually the model. But, you know, our experience has been, you still will need, at some point, a, a license for skilled level of nursing care, if that's just the way it's defined. And you can't provide that in a, in any other setting. Memory care would be under assisted living, and if someone really needed more type, you know, higher level of skilled care, it would still have to be provided in a nursing home setting, so.
And I, um, I, I think from my perspective, that's the segment of the population that needs this the most, the, the, the full-time, round-the-clock care. I also, I think one of the things we are up against with, with this proposal is that we're, we're the first building that's coming in in this price range, but this is what the norm is gonna be. We're not building buildings for $50 million anymore. There, the estimates on what we need for the DPW were very large, I mean, that, that failed. This one did pa, did pass at the ballot vote. But I just, I think that that's a major hurdle, and I'm correct, I mean, people can obviously correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know that saving less than 20 million off of this price and losing a whole wing kinda solves it. And I don't, and I don't know how we responsibly renovate the existing building, which is still gonna cost, I'm not, I'm not even sure, but tens of millions of dollars to end up with 24 beds. And still a building that's going, it's not gonna be efficient, it's going to need ongoing maintenance. So I'm just, I'm really stuck here, I've put a lot of time into this, I, I need some new, some fresh looks.
My, my greatest concern here is that we save a percentage of a fixed cost that will be paid off, and what we trade off is a reduction in revenue that we will have forever. So when you look at it long-term, that carving off one wing will cost us more in the long run. It won't cost the current taxpayers as much, but it will cost the community more over time, because we won't have the revenue, so the, the amount we have to subsidize the building on an operating basis will go up. And that's in perpetuity, because there's not, and if we build the wing later, it's gonna be way more money, it's, nothing's getting cheaper, so I, I don't know what the answer is. It is, sorry.
I mean, there is the option of bringing it back as is for another vote at town meeting. We have the ballot vote. But I, and, and people were vehemently against selling the property. And, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want to do that, I think that that property in itself is a legacy. But, um, but it would be the easiest way to reduce the overall cost.
I think, I think the hesitation for the, from a lot of the public was it was gonna go to some, you know, private use to go out on the market or something like that. If it were a land bank, and if it were gonna be used as open space and are used as open space with a senior center or something there, and it, and the land bank was buying the property to, you know, allow that to happen, then I think they might be more willing, let's put it that way.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
On that topic, I have had some discussions with the executive director of the land bank, and that is an option that the land bank is open to discussing. But we're not gonna get $50 million for that property. I don't know what it would be, but is it going to offset the senior center? Is it going to offset the Island Home? It's not gonna offset this in a very large way. We said this at the, at the very beginning of, of our outreach about this project, leading up to the 2025 town meeting. It is very expensive. If the community wants a nursing home that is modern, up-to-date, pleasant, and meets today's standards, then it's very expensive. And as you pointed out, this is, this is our most expensive project ever. Thinking the Martha's Vineyard Times today or yesterday, they've just gotten the news about a new potential school for $250 million. They're not the same project, but this is the type of, of cost we're gonna start seeing. And I very much understand what Amy was talking about with tax bill increases and things like that. We, no one wants to shove people off island because they can't afford to live here. It is a dilemma. But it, this isn't, the Island Home is not the only dilemma that we're going to be dealing with. And these costs are not going to go down, we don't know what tariffs are going to end up with, and it's a choice. And it, I mean, I guess we can, I, I don't really know how to interpret the voting, but the voters didn't approve it. So now we have to figure out what our next steps are, and nobody wants to close the facility, but that, that is probably in our future if we are not going to follow one of these other options, and I don't, I don't, I'm not meaning tomorrow or anything like that, but in the next several years, it's gonna have to be launched.
I just wanted to react to something Brooke just said. And as we said, there's...
And as we said, there's a lot more work that needs to be done on the financials, because there is a counterargument to that. If ultimately all patients end up on Medicaid, having more beds has, means that there's more people for whom we have a five-hundred-dollar-a-day deficit. So I don't really know where it all shakes out, and we're gonna have to do some really hard work to, to figure that out. So I just caution people about making, I, I know we said it would be a loss of revenue, but we also said it's quite preliminary, and we'd like to do some more work on that if that's a path you guys wanna go down.
Uh, Dawn, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm struggling to find my unmute click. Just to be clear, my recollection is that I think it was always, at least in my mind, that the land bank would recognize the value of the property where our current island home is and pay the appropriate amount of money. And, um, I don't want anybody to forget that. And if the land bank commission isn't willing to negotiate with you, or you choose not to, I think that's unfortunate. So my sense is that that source of revenue is available right now. It doesn't have to go to a private developer.
Just to follow up on that, I, I don't know if that was a follow-up to something that I might have said, but the land bank is open to a discussion. But they are not, by their own legislation, going to be able to pay more than fair market value. I mean, with the, I'm sure there is some negotiating room there. We have not gone down that road just yet, but it, it isn't going to, it isn't going to be, you know-
Ninety-nine point nine-nine-nine million.
Ninety-nine million dollars. Not gonna cover the cost of the new facility.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it, it's worth having a more discussion about that. But, um, we would have need to, we would also need a town meeting vote authorizing us to dispose of the property. Brooke?
I would, I would be interested in having a discussion with the land bank, see if there's a number, and then ha, holding some kind of public forum where we ask whether the community would be willing to move forward with the plan we had if it were offset by the amount of money that the land bank was willing to pay for the old, um, location. And start with that. That's the simplest thing. With the understanding that this project has to be rebid, and we have no idea when it's rebid, what, how much, it's not coming in lower-
We're losing money.
But as a first thing we could do, then we, we don't spend any more money on design, we don't spend any more money on anything. We say, okay, we can find this X millions of dollars to offset the cost. Would the, would, would you consider that as a trade-off? And see what we hear back in some kind of public meeting.
I, I had talked a little bit about maybe doing a survey with some of these options as well. Obviously, it needs to be written.
Yeah, we can certainly, we can certainly explore that. Now, just back to the land bank purchasing the property option. If we still wanna have a senior center there, then that does have to be carved out. So I don't, you know, yeah.
Yeah, like with the land bank? By half the property. Malcolm, sorry?
Yes, uh, I mean, obviously, at this point, based on both votes, there's not a lot of community support, none that was overwhelming. None of the options, and Mr. Sears, I congratulate you for doing a marvelous job in an impossible None of the options are very excitable or comfortable with me. This idea of purchasing, uh, having a land bank purchase is something we really need to look at. I haven't thought about it. I had, um, I guess I'm not smart enough to have thought about it before, but I think it's an option that needs exploring.
Well, just, the, the big discussion before was people were very concerned to lose that setting. So that was, and we knew that the senior center was in need of a location, and it seemed like a good, a good idea to think about putting the senior center. There obviously numbers have grown, of cour, but now then we would have to look at acquiring or finding another site for the senior center, because it's way too small where it is. Rick, did you have your hand up again? Did you have a follow-up?
Can you hear me, Dawn?
Yes.
That's right, I did. I was, uh, gonna follow up on my comments. Just to be clear, I don't think, honestly, sorry about this, but if the senior center use of that property should get in the way of allowing the band, land bank to buy the property, we can find other locations for a senior center. I would just suggest you all look at the Chatham efforts to find a senior center. They've been at this for what? You know, five years. I mean, you, you, you check it out. Very difficult. But I think we can find it on our own and not have it get in the way in this session, in this discussion. Thank you.
Here's a, just another sort of thing to throw in, just for thoughts. Right now, uh, various, you know, banks and things are predicting forty, sixty percent chance of a recession. You know, no one knows for sure whether that's gonna happen or not. You know, no one has a crystal ball. But, uh, you know, right now, prices are, of certain things are moderating a little bit. Some have even kinda tweaked down a little bit. And there's, and a lot of, there, what's happened is a lot of people have, a lot of businesses have bought a lot of inventory and put it aside because of what's, you know, potential costs coming from China, et cetera. So, you know, so there is concern about a recession. I've built, you know, I've made my major expenses in downtimes and have saved a substantial amount of money. If the town can, you know, if this, if we have the plans ready and have a vote and, and, and we time it right, you know, we might, you know, and I'm saying, I don't think this is a guarantee at all, but I think the, the thought that this will only go up and it's only gonna go up astronomically, yeah, in the long term, yes, but there may be a bit of a blip, you know? So anyway, I'm not sure that that's gonna happen. No one can be a hundred percent sure, but I think it's, it's, it's a little bit of a chance, so. Exactly.
If we were going with the same plan, we would rebid it for the annual-
Mm-hmm.
And go with the definitive number like this time.
Madam Chair, I just wanna say that I disagree with one of the speakers before about that this requires a lot of further study. I think that your committee and the folks that we have hired and are involved and the OIH folks have, have really done that. And the options that we're left with are what is in Rick's presentation tonight. And I think that's what we're discussing. And I, I, I think Brooke's idea on floating that is a really good one. And I also completely agree with you that reducing the size for a slightly smaller number is penny-wise and pound-foolish. It, it, it doesn't make sense. The, the cost is going, as Brooke said, we don't know what the rebid would costs, uh, would, would cost, but the overall process, after seeing this, but not being on the committee, but, but being a member of the board and as a member of the public going through that, you guys put in the time, and as they say in political science, there are no solutions, there are trade-offs, just trade-offs. And there are a lot of trade-offs to this, but it, it, it was the best option of the main, many options. And so I think if, if there is some kind of offset from the land bank and the property and the community is okay with that, that is a good, as good a start as any. And, and I, I like where this is going. I know it's not exactly answers or, or exact direction, but I think it's positive.
And then I would add to that, maybe, maybe in combination, you know, I know Rick, Rick countered my argument about it will cost more to run with, with one wing less. Maybe that's worth evaluating a little bit as well, because maybe some combination of revenue from the lamp, the sale of the land and the elimination of a wing.
Yeah, um, we did talk about the fact that we could do a bid alternate that removes the wing. Right, right, Craig?
Yes, sorry, Greg Piper. Yes, any of our projects can be bid in parts or pieces, so we'll know those numbers when we go back out to bid. So we would understand the impact of not building one wing as part of the bid process.
Okay, well, it sounds like we have some general direction.
What is that again?
We need to talk to the land bank?
Yes.
We need to get this, something out there to see what people's reaction will be, because there was vehement opposition before to selling this property, but maybe that's changed with the new numbers. And then, you know, discussion of all the options that cost a lot of money.
I think, I think the big concern was that-
Say your name.
Oh, Peter Schaefer. I think the big concern was that they were worried it was gonna be sold for housing. And they didn't wanna see twenty-million-dollar houses go on that property. And I think if it's gonna stay as part of the, a public property somehow through the land bank or anything like that, I don't think the, the resistance would be nearly as, as much as it was before.
So do people feel like we have some direction for administration?
Well, I-
Just Libby.
I don't see anybody jumping up to say yes, but I, I, for now, why don't we follow up on the land bank idea? And again, the, I have had some discussion with them already, and they're very open to a discussion about this. We can have some internal discussion about what a survey could look like and figure out what it would take to do additional cost analysis of the operation, operational expense for a smaller facility at the Sherburne site.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I need a survey or an operational. I think the, the biggest thing for me is if we're gonna go back to town meeting, I think we need to be able to explain how it's, you know, how, how else are we bringing the cost down? You know, and it, and have some, we have to have a different pitch than we had. And so if we're saying we've got X amount from the land bank and, you know, that, I think would go a long way. And we've made a, a couple of changes that can be added on to later, and it's, you know, ninety-nine, ninety-nine, then maybe, you know, maybe we get it. So people like nines at the end, you know?
Anything else for tonight? Are there any committee reports? No? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those, if you're by roll call, Matt Fee?
Aye.
Tom Dixon?
Aye.
Brooke Moore?
Aye.
Malcolm McNabb?
Aye.
Thanks for hanging in there, Malcolm. I'm an I, we're adjourned.
I love it.
It is-